Okay, let's get started. Let's begin with non-agenda testimony. We've got Jonathan Smith, Lisa Karachi, Mary Lyupa, and Selena Scott.
I guess not. All right, don't worry about it. Okay. Good evening, board members and concerned citizens. My name is Jonathan Smith, and I am the founder and president of Green Solutions Communications. We're advocates of environmental friendliness, social responsibility, and economic empowerment. We have offices in San Diego and Los Angeles. I'm here to show the district responsible ways to save money and natural resources to ensure that our children and their children inherit an earth that is clean and abundant in natural resources, and to help our communities grow and prosper through education and new career opportunities in the sustainable energy industry and the entire green collar economy. So how do you accomplish this? You begin by taking a close look at ways of becoming more efficient in different areas within your control. For the sake of this argument, we will present the findings of a recent case study that Green Solutions Communications conducted at Morris High School at our expense with no cost to the district. This case study focused on reducing energy and water consumption and saving not only thousands of dollars a year in the energy cost, but precious water resources as well. By converting the current 32-watt fluorescent light bulbs used in the classrooms with more efficient, energy-efficient, and environmentally-friendly 25-watt light bulbs, the district will reduce up to 26 percent of its power consumption and related costs while maintaining current lighting levels. This translates to a savings of over $4,000 per month just on the lights in the classrooms at one school. If the 21 traditional urinals in the men's restrooms were replaced with waterless urinals, the district would save over $14,000 a year and 1,200,000 gallons of water at one high school. If the existing power provider, SDG&E, was supplemented with a sustainable energy source in the form of solar panels, the district would reduce its energy dependence on SDG&E by more than 80 percent. Furthermore, the district would have no out-of-pocket expense for the installation and maintenance of the solar panels and would immediately begin to save money. Over a 30-year period, the district would save over $9 million and reduce our carbon footprint substantially. It is our recommendation that the district develop a request for proposal for Morris High School that would include the installation of efficient lighting, waterless urinals, and solar panels. Additionally, the request for proposal should require that all work be done, be performed, by local contractors and labor force located within the surrounding communities. We at Green Solutions Communications are available to review all research and backup materials concerning every aspect of this presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Lisa Karachi, Mary Lyupa, Selena Scott, Roger Canfield, Jerry Martinez, and James Scott.
I don't see Lisa.
Go ahead.
I'm Mary Lyupa, the teacher-librarian at Claremont and Kearney, and I was here to finish my report on library activities with my other split assignment, Kearney. However, I received written notice that I am now declared at excess, so that seems pretty moot. Instead, I'm going to make a suggestion. Since Kearney so adamantly resists having a certificated librarian that they're willing to give up that .5 FTE that's tied to a library assignment, I'm suggesting that you take that and you reallocate it as a gift to another school that's shown that they understand the importance of an information specialist in preparing students for 21st century information literacy. That would be Sarah High School. It's come to my attention that Sarah High School has hired a substitute credentialed librarian for at least half-time for this year, just so their students have somebody. It's because nobody would bid on them because they're split between Sarah and Crawford. Well, gift that .5 to Sarah. Sarah gets a full-time library position. Put it on the post and bid. I guarantee you'll have six librarians in this district bidding on that position. Just a suggestion. Kearney loses no money. The money's tied to the position. They don't want the position. And it's a wash for you guys, too. All it takes is a motion from the board, reallocate the money for as long as Kearney doesn't want a librarian. Sarah's got that extra .5. All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Please.
Good evening. My name is Selena Scott, and I am the parent of two students that attend Johnson STEM Magnet Elementary School. I have a son who is one of many who did not get into Millennial Tech Middle School this year or for next year. I was the secretary of the PTA three years ago, and it was through the efforts of the PTA three years ago that actually made the crusade to get Millennial Tech into existence. And we were told that our students would receive priority from Johnson Elementary School as well as Webster Elementary School, that Millennial Tech would be our feeder. Our students have had the education of a STEM education since kindergarten. We fought for this because we did not feel that our children should have to go to a charter school and that they should benefit from the STEM education that they received and go into a STEM middle school. We've been led to believe for the past two years that our sixth graders this year, whose parents made this effort possible, who made Millennial a reality, would have spots and slots available for our children that are graduating and going into seventh grade next year. This year is when it became questionable as to whether our students would have slots and spots available. I think that this is unfair and unjust, and I think that this is a wrong that needs to be righted by whatever means that you have available to do so. The students are the ones who are not being treated fairly in this. The parents that fought for this to make this happen are not being treated fairly. Our students deserve this school. The parents have fought for this school. Every other community has a feeder school. Our school, our community, should have a feeder school as well. Thank you for your time and consideration in the matter.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Hello, my name is Roger Canfield. I live at 4304 View Place, San Diego, California. I'm here to talk about what I think the budget cut should be part of. I think the district needs to get rid of the inadequate administrators such as Michelle Erin, Joe Shaw, Minor Courtney, and Flavio Perez, Kurt Ekne, Rodney Thomas. These administrators run their sites by intimidation, discrimination, harassment. Most of these administrators learn this from their supervisors, such as Greg Taylor, who's known for nepotism.
Point of order. We don't identify, I believe you haven't read that yet, but we don't identify by name, okay, when we're talking about if you have a complaint about, you know, specific issues, but we don't call people out by name.
Well, these people are the reasons that we have problems with, this district has problems with classifieds because they don't treat their classified employees at all.
But it's our policy not to do that, sir, but, you know, we take your message, but please don't, you know, draw our people out in that way.
Please, well.
You can continue.
You can continue. You just can't use a person's name, that's all. And then you can't provide the names to Ms. Ward or to Mr. Kova.
Okay.
We're sorry.
Okay. Well, to me, if you keep the administrators that are doing wrong, that keep doing this, do harassment and discrimination and so forth, that there, how are we supposed to teach our kids, our students, standards and morals when it's obvious that these people that I've mentioned, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I didn't know, and I shouldn't mention it, but they should not be administered, as far as I'm concerned, and a lot of other classifieds feel the same way, because they continuously break district policies, rules, and only don't even adhere to the contract that I have to adhere to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Canfield. Please, Mr. Dubec.
Well, before you leave, sir, you know, the things you've described are things that should be in a written, formal complaint that's sent forward to the board. Now, if you came and said, and I'm not trying to correct you because you really didn't know this, but I really honestly don't think you're trying to violate our rules or anything, but if you have a complaint about the behavior, and this is true for anyone in the district, that they want the board to pay attention to, and they can cite specific examples of this person violated a contract, or this person violated, or this person was abusive in the workplace, there's all kinds of remedies around this that are available, not only through the unions, but also through the state of California laws about the workplace. So those should be noted, but to bring them to here and start to make the allegations is just what we don't do, okay? So I want to say, there is an avenue for you to make your complaints, it's just not here, okay?
Well, excuse me, Mr. Dubec. There has been many grievances and 7110s filed on these people that I have mentioned, and nothing's been done yet.
Dan, you have a complaint about the people you grieve to.
And my union's been fighting to get these people, you know, done, I mean, have them do their job right, and the district keeps doing a shell game with them.
Thank you. What we, thank you. If I can speak for a moment, Mr. Kova, will you look into it and find out where those are getting stopped at, if those complaints have been filed? Okay.
Jerry Martinez and James Scott.
My name is James Scott, and my address is 4750 Seminole, San Diego, California, 92115. I go to Johnson STEM. The STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. This is the same program Millennial Tech holds. Now, for as long as I can remember, I wanted to pursue the career as an engineer. By going to Millennial Tech, this would be the first step to taking, well, this would be the first step to achieving this goal. And when I found out that me and the rest of my student, well, me and the rest of my student friends had not been accepted into our own feeder school, it was very discouraging and it was a disappointment, and I was trying to figure out how this would be beneficial to the student body. Johnson, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, James.
Hi, good afternoon, board members. My name is Jerry Martinez Chavez. I've been here in over a couple of months. This past year, I served as an advisor at San Diego State for the high school conferences, and I want to compliment the district. I've met some outstanding high school students from different high schools, Lincoln, I believe, Kearney, different students that I met, and, boy, I have been on campus in over 20 years, and I was just, you've had some outstanding students on campus, and it's a privilege that I walk around and I see different students and a smile on their face, and things will get better. I'm doing a program next year. I titled it "Instill the Seeds for Higher Education." I want to serve as a blueprint for the districts to adopt. I'm going to do it at the San Diego School District under the leadership of Manuel Paul, the superintendent. What it is, is going to have sixth-grade students will visit the campus and just get a tour of the campus. And I want students to conceptualize and visualize and experience a university environment. We want to instill. Another project that we're going to do is first and second graders are going to write, are going to do some art projects. We have a program called Astec Projects. Again, we're showing the first and second graders, just to express their visual merchandising skills. We had this year one elementary school, I believe, up in the La Jolla District. President Weber had a school in that area that was selected, and it was good, but this program that I'm going to do, I would like to, in due time, welcome the San Diego Unified to adopt it. I'm going to, this upcoming academic year will be the first year I will implement it, and as I get some feedback, I will more than happy to work with the San Diego Unified. I want to start small, San Diego, I grew up in that community, and then start on A, and then I'll work with B. You students here, the young men, I cherish your dream. It's good to have a dream. I'm a product of farm workers, Jesus Chavez. I was a farm worker in the class of, summer of '82, and I believe education starts at a small, tender age. We instill this, that's why I call it "Instill the Seeds of Higher Education." I don't want to take too much of the community time, but it's good to see different people. My eyes hurt, so I'm wearing the glasses out of disrespect, but the light at times hurts my eyes. But I want to thank the district for welcoming me, and it's good to see everybody. I'm going to enjoy sitting here, the lecture, but in due time, I want to have this program as part of. It'll take some time, but all we have is time, and I want gradual growth, and that's the aim, is gradual growth in education. Thank you for your time, and have a good afternoon.
All right. Thanks, thanks. All right, I'd now like to ask the Army JROTC color guard from Madison High School to present the colors. Please stand.
Order, march, left, 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 right, left, left, left. March on, march. Order, halt. They were fake, carry, cut. Color, salute.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, cut. Order, cut. Right, face, trail, cut. Order, march, left, 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 right, left, left.
All right, please be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the April 27, 2010 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit to Ms. Ward. Speakers on the agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was just heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representative to the board to introduce himself. Vince, please tell us about what's going on at your school. This is Vince Gomino, president at La Jolla High School.
Hey, how's it going? This week is star testing, so seniors tomorrow get to sleep in till 10:30 in school. But on Monday, our ASB representatives went around to the English classrooms and educated students on the importance of the test and how it was important to do well, because I think a lot of the students don't know that, how it affects the school and, like, our scores and how it increases funding if we do well and vice versa, and so, like, what we got to, sort of, the biggest motivation was informing them that Scripps Ranch was beating us. They have a better score. So, sort of like a rivalry that we're trying to play out, and our.
I think their seniors get there at eight, Vince.
That's fine. Good for them. Our ASB dodgeball team won the dodgeball tournament.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They probably got there at 8:00 AM, too.
Our science team is preparing for its second blood drive of the year, and ASB is working on its teens for a cure walkathon, which is in late May, and this is, I believe, the second annual for that. And we placed over the weekend fourth in the National Ocean Sciences Bowl and first place in the first-ever AP Biology Bowl at Sarah High School.
All right. Good job, Vince. Thank you. Okay, we now have our student presentation from Spreckles Elementary School and the Friends of Rose Canyon, Dr. Evans.
Yes, I'm very glad today to welcome a group from Rose Canyon. This is a good combination because it involves science education, children and nature, it involves volunteerism, it involves low cost, a lot of different things. And so what we have is basically, just to give you a little bit of background on the situation, is Debbie Knight is a leader of Friends of Rose Canyon. In San Diego, we have all kinds of canyons throughout our community where children can really learn a lot about nature, and she has volunteered to go to all the schools in the University City Cluster, elementary schools, middle school, high school, and offer her services as a docent in the canyon to teach the children about the plants and animals that are there. And just because we are in very tight budget times, this avoids having to take field trips. They basically can walk from five different schools to the canyon, and so she's here today with some students from Spreckles Bynum Magnet Academy to tell us a little bit about the program. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be very short because they have a lot better things to say than I do. I do have two handouts, one about Friends of Rose Canyon and with a lot of photos from the walks that we've taken, and we have great support from elementary school teachers. We're starting to work now with the middle school is coming, and we do some work with the high school. And this is a flyer, John has right that all over San Diego, we have canyons, and this is a children and nature collaborative that is working to do similar things all around the city. So it's a great opportunity for us, and I think we're going to go right to the video, right? Okay, we have a video where we did, we have a video where we did some seed scattering with first grades last fall. We actually did it with a number of ones, so this will take you right to Rose Canyon and show you something about it. Printer.
They are involved with hiking down the trail and experiencing the canyon and the chappelle habitat, and also worrying about seed dispersal. We show them native plants versus invasive plant species, and then we're going to be collecting the plant seeds, and then allowing the kids to spread the seeds in an area that's been raped and ready for restoration. Once we get to the canyon trailhead, our guide will inform the kids and the parents of some of the basic natural habitat and natural ecology of the canyon, and we talk a little bit more about seed dispersal mechanisms, native versus introduced plant species, and some of the other foreign fauna in the canyon. And then we take them down in three separate groups, and on the way down, we describe different native plant species and show them which ones are flowering and seeding. Once we get down to the canyon, the three groups will spread out and start collecting seeds from different native plants, and doing it in a way that doesn't damage the plants at all, just gently moving some of the seed pods. The kids that come on these trips really, with this added activity, scattering seeds, they really get a lot more than just a pool hike or a field trip outside of the classroom. Because we're actually talking about specific plants, we're talking about a specific area, and we're getting literal hands-on by collecting seeds and then distributing them, dispersing them themselves, they seem to be gaining a sense of ownership over this canyon, which I think is crucial. Friends of Rose Canyon has spearheaded this project, they're a nonprofit organization, and Debbie Knight, who's a co-creator of this organization, has worked over quite a few years with different schools in this area. There are at least three elementary schools, a middle school and a high school in the University City area that are within walking distance to Rose Canyon, which makes it a very convenient backyard educational experience for these kids. Exposing kids to nature and also supporting efforts, local grassroots efforts to preserve and save our natural ecosystems has been growing exponentially, really, in the last few years. There's a school garden network, California School Garden Network. There are other organizations that encourage connecting kids with nature, and that's really one, just is one part of what we're trying to achieve with the seed scattering project here at Rose Canyon. This is a plant that the Cooley guys, the Native Americans used, and they do, and they, no, not looking at the seed, but they, it has a kind of a nice smell, so they dry out the leaves, and then they burn them, and it gave off a nice smell. We're like, oh, that's weird. And eventually, we'll make it off to an area that's been prepared for restoration, and we let the kids scatter the seeds. Ready, start, scatter your seeds. One, two, three, scatter! We want them to basically spread them out as if they were blowing around by the wind, or they got carried by an animal like a bobcat. So it's quite fun for the kids because it's very informal. Some of them try actually bury the seeds, which we don't discourage, and some of them just fly their bag collecting, seed collecting bag in the air, and the seeds just fly everywhere. Which is not that big either. So we're looking at numbers, the more seeds scattering you do, we're hoping once the rains come in, that we'll have a better chance of seeds coming, some seed rains pop up to our garden. So just exposing more parents, children, teachers, and educators to this native jam is really crucial at this point.
Heckleoddy where I, that's my part.
Take your stuff up here, Debbie. They can see them better.
I want to point out, too, that a lot of what we do is not seed scattering. That was just sort of a, what, activity we tried out last fall, but we have all kinds of, it's often just experiential, and we always encounter something different, so there's great excitement and anticipation on my part as well, and the guides wondering what we're going to find, so.
My name's Simon, and I like Rose Canyon because I get to learn about animals and all kinds of stuff, and that's why I like Rose Canyon.
My name's Adriana, and I like Rose Canyon because I learn about native plants and other animals that you don't see every day, and it's very fun to walk around and see nature once in a while.
My name is, hi, my name is Oscar. I like Rose Canyon Park because we can see a lot of different animals, spiders, lizards, squirrels, frogs, birds, beetles, and more. I think Rose Canyon is. Is a nice place to be with my family and friends.
Hi, my name is Juan, and I, I like Rose Canyon because you learn about. Hi, my name is Juan, and I like Rose Canyon because you learn about nature, and it's fun, and it gives you a lot of exercise.
Hi, my name is Andrew. I like Rosa Park because we can see a lot of spiders and any animal that we like. And once in a time, we always go. And once in a time, we can go and have fun with our friends and our brothers. So once in a while, can you guys go and help us?
Hi, my name is Kyle Lazarson, and I think that Rose Canyon is a great place for school field trips because you can learn so much about nature. Just two weeks ago, on a short hike, I saw 21 different animals, including turkey vultures, fence lizards, scrub jays, and much, much more.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you very much, all of you, for coming from Spreckles. And also to Dr. Cecina Fernandez, who is the principal at Spreckles, who's here with us also.
No, I can talk about the poison oak the next bit.
They get to know how, what it looks like and how it feels.
Great job, guys. Thank you. Do you want Mr. DeBak?
Yeah, well, I want to say, I hope there's somebody like you doing Teckalodee Canyon because, you know, that's been my grandkid's favorite place to go. And these guided tours with people who know what they're seeing is very important. The kids will walk through these canyons day after day or cut through them, and they only worry about maybe coyotes or something else wrong that could happen in that canyon, which the parents are wise to say about. But what they really miss is the beauty of these canyons. So schools should take advantage of them, and I really appreciate what you're doing because that's very important. And they are within walking distance of almost every school in this district. And so what you're doing should expand throughout the district because kids love field trips. And there's so much they can learn and bring back to school and share. So it's remarkable. Thank you.
Yes, and there is actually a national network now that Richard Louvre wrote a book called Last Child in the Woods that some of you might have heard of. And nationally, kids have become so disconnected from nature because they're either on the computer or they're not allowed to play outside unsupervised anymore, that this is the best we can do. And we have three guides for one class, so we break them into small groups so they have a much more natural kind of interaction exploratory experience in the canyon.
I thank you for that because it's really valuable for these kids to learn about their community and see how close they really are to nature.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Okay, let's move on to item C, the report of closed session actions and the superintendent's information report. Superintendent Kova.
Thank you, President Brera. There are no assignments today, but I do have a number of items I want to share with the board and the public at large. I think first and foremost, let's start with the great, very positive news. We had the privilege of last week hearing from the state that San Diego Unified set a district record with a number of schools identified as 2010 California Distinguished Schools. And that included 15 elementaries. And I just wanted to read them off to give them that public recognition. Barnard, Armandina Chinese Magnet, Bay Park, Bird Rock, Bernie, Cadment, Chesterton, E.B. Scripps, Erickson, Foster, Jones, Loma Portal, Nye, Perry, Sequoia, and Vista Grande. And we'd like to thank them for all of the hard work. So that's, I think, a tremendous reflection of what we are doing. Proportionally in the state, we were among the league leaders, 15 out of our 122 elementaries. And a great reflection, I think, of administrators, staff, parents, kids, community as a whole. Another item I want to bring up is we had a meeting last week, myself, a number of the senior educators, Dr. Shirley Weber from San Diego State, Dr. Joe Johnson, the San Diego State University Qualcomm Professor of Urban Education, and the Executive Director of the National Center for Urban School Transformation, as well as representatives from Pizzazz and the Urban League. We want to work closely with Dr. Johnson. He is a treasurer and educational resource in our own backyard at San Diego State. He has done a lot of work across the country identifying best practices among schools and trying to bring about change in a very positive way for highest need schools. We actually, earlier this year, when the board and the community was briefed on best school practices, successful schools, we were using his model. So we're in the process of opening a dialogue with him. I'm going to meet again this week with the educational team to talk about defining a relationship with Dr. Johnson. So there's a whole lot more to follow. A couple other items quickly. I and trustee Mrs. Nakamura and trustee Ms. Jackson had, I think, a very fun time recognizing Colonel Dingman. Last Thursday was Colonel Robert E. Dingman Day. And it's quite something, I think, special to actually visit the school of a namesake who's living. And obviously, that's a tremendous honor for Mr. Pepper, Colonel Dingman. And the fact that there is a man that is a model of giving. He gave of himself as a retired military officer, moved to the Scripps Ranch area almost four decades ago, was very active and is still active as a community contributor and obviously a volunteer at his namesake school. And it was an incredible outpouring, I thought, of sharing and recognition of what he does on a very regular basis. A packed, multifunctional room with students, teachers, parents, again. And of course, I had to recognize that he and I combined have over half a century of military service, so we had to put a plug in for that. And then very last thing, I think another very positive perspective on what we're doing well in terms of education in the district. President Brera and I had the opportunity to walk and talk the campus at Edison Elementary School, right in our center of city area. And what we're doing right in a very positive teaming effort with teachers, principals, parents, in a school setting where almost 100% free and reduced lunch, almost that same amount in English language learner. Incredible to see what they're doing to bring success. And if we could replicate that across the district, we'd knock the socks off not just 15 distinguished schools, but 50 or 75. So it was very positive in that visit. That's all I have.
Thanks, Superintendent. Thank you. Okay, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Go ahead.
Let's vote. Hi, Sheila.
Oh.
Okay, and can we get a motion to approve the minutes of our meetings of January 12th, 26th, and February 23rd?
Second.
Okay. On to information reports from the board. Why don't we start with Ms. Nakamura?
Oh, okay. Great. Last week was really a very, it was a tremendously busy week. As Superintendent Kova indicated, you know, we had Robert Dingman Day. Mr. Dingman will be 88 years old coming up. And it was really touching to see the families and the parents, you know, the teachers and the students who came out for this really beloved person. It's the 10th anniversary of Dingman Elementary. So while they have Dingman Day every day, or, you know, well, pretty much they do because he's there pretty much every day, but they have Dingman Day every year, it was something special. So I appreciate everyone coming out for that and participating, a lot of the principals in the area were also there, including the former principal. I want to put in a plug for these California Distinguished Schools that we have. I've sat in on a number of the interviews when schools in my area are being, you know, interviewed by the committee. And it's rigorous. There's several days worth, the teachers, the parents, they really drill down and find out what this school is all about. And you don't just get this. It's a lot of work. And so these schools really deserve credit and recognition. And, you know, I would encourage the board members, if your schools, one of your schools was here, go ahead and write them a note because I know that means a lot to them, you know, the recognition from us. It's a lot of hard work. I'm a member of the Kyoto Laureates Symposium here in San Diego, which is an organization that brings laureates to San Diego who are world internationally recognized. Laureates in general science, advanced technology, arts and philosophy. And San Diego Unified has participated in this organization for a number of years now. But I'd like to call out a couple of things that happened this year. We had three lectures, as I said, general sciences. This was in biology at UCSD, advanced technology for semiconductors at SDSU, and then arts and philosophy lecture was at USD. And walking out of the general sciences at UCSD, we encourage, this organization actually supplies buses for them to come to these lectures. And there were a group of kids from Hoover, AP Biology from Hoover. And one of the kids turned to their teacher and said, "I totally understood that lecture." And they were just amazed that they could go to a university like UCSD and actually understand a lecture of this caliber. So it was good for them. But also, I have to call out that the Kyoto Laureates also hosted a special lecture of that same group at the Natural History Museum for 275 of our science teachers were able to meet and gather, hear the lecture, talk afterwards. And they were promised that there would be no bake sale cookies. They actually had wine and hors d'oeuvres and had a wonderful time together. It was very, very well done. Furthermore, one of our lectures got, one of our students received a $10,000 scholarship for this. Mr. Brera, you can talk about the AP Science Bowl, if you would, that you and I did, went to the following day on Saturday, which was remarkable.
Well, along with Ms. Nakamura, I'd like to congratulate the schools who reached distinguished school status. One of the things that happens frequently when we're looking at severe budget situations is in terms of closing some small schools. And it's interesting that two of the smaller schools in San Diego, Cadment, Sequoia, actually turned out to be two of the most distinguished schools in the state of California. So we have to be really, really careful in the future when we're looking at things like that. The other thing I just wanted to comment on briefly is the fact that we've had the town hall meetings talking about the board's long-term plans for our students in the 21st Century, as well as the superintendent's selection process. And I do really want to reassure people that the voices are being heard. Board members are attending. Superintendent, search committee members are there, and we're recording all of the information so that we can revise based on public input on these very important matters. This is very important for the long-term planning of the district, and we need to have everybody involved. At the same time, we can easily get lulled, as I keep mentioning every time, the fact that while we have worked out a way to balance our budget with great difficulty for next year, it's going to be much, much, much worse in years to come if we don't make a big turnaround in California. So everybody needs to remember, May 8th, Educate for the Future is planning, and I'm sure Mr. Brera will have more to say about this, but it'll be at Balboa Park at 10:00 AM on Saturday, May 8th. And we need to have every teacher, every classified employee, every administrator, every parent, every child, and every citizen in San Diego who's concerned about public education. This is occurring a few days before the governor releases his revised budget for education in the state of California. And we want the message to be very loud and clear from Balboa Park all the way up to Sacramento. So we want to have a huge community turnout to say, "No more cuts to education."
Ms. Jackson.
Certainly. Just a couple of things. Last week was indeed a very busy week. I started out on Monday being one of the general major session speakers for the National Math Conference Leadership Institute. And I shared this with my peers. It was great to talk about mathematics and the role it plays in our educational system. And we know it's a great equalizer. So I'm sure that they had fun that day, but the whole week, working with math. In addition to that, YMCA held their annual, Detective Robinson YMCA held their annual scholarship dinner this past Saturday afternoon. And we have some really smart, talented students in our district. They had students from across the district, not just, you know, their area, which is Lincoln and Morris area, but from Proise and other schools throughout the entire city. I also want to, Monday morning, we had the pleasure, I said "we," but the Navy, the military component here hosted a K-12 educational forum. And I took a moment to drop by there, and I want to thank our staff that was in attendance. It is extremely important that we support on a continual basis our military families. They're relocating more military ships here to San Diego. We are already the largest base, conus, for military population. But with that, we receive a lot of students. And these students sometimes are, their families are deployed and they need additional support. And I want to thank the military component for hosting this wonderful conference. And I brought some brochures because it was, it went through everything from the counseling part, how to help with homework, to how to access the system. So that was really nice as well, indeed. This coming Saturday, and we heard students speak from Johnson and their parents, talk about the STEM program that we have at Millennial Tech, and we'll look into the admission policies there. But on Saturday, the National Council of Negro Women is hosting its annual STEM Day for girls. Last year, we had, there was over 100 young ladies there from across the county, not just our city, but across the county. So I wanted to, first of all, applaud them for their efforts and invite anyone who knows young ladies to get them involved. We know that we need to have women participating in mathematics, in science, technology, engineering. And we have, they have a host of wonderful speakers that will be speaking to the young ladies at that particular time. And lastly, I would just ask for a moment of silence. One of San Diego's, I would say, the face of downtown, Sheila Harding passed last week. Her service was this morning. And the center that is down there that we normally do our tours is being named after her. If you come to San Diego, it'll be the Sheila Harding San Diego Welcoming Center for the city. So it's a moment for her, if you don't mind. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Jackson. Mr. DeBak?
Sure. We had a really good meeting of the partnership steering committee, now being ably chaired by Ellen Tiffany of the staff. And we were working on reading and planning the awards for Volunteers of the Year, which will happen in our partnership event coming up. And I also attended the town hall meeting with the two of you that was held at Pacific Beach Middle School. It was a good turnout, and I think people are very, very open in their suggestions for how we could select a new superintendent to last a while. And then I also just learned today, and I was really very pleased because, I call him the gentle giant, Bruce Ward received the Physical Education Administrator of the Year Award. And this guy has dedicated his life to, I think, the betterment of student athletics and health in this school system. And I do appreciate it. I know it was a kind of a second career for him, but he's done a great job, so.
Who did he receive this from? Who did, what organization did he receive this, what organization did he receive this from?
Oh, I can't remember where it came from, but I mean, he was a charger. He had been in athletics and a coach all over the place. So he had a great resume. I'm not all that familiar with his whole history, but that was great. And of course, it's political season, so that sort of took up a little of my time this year, this last week. But we won't talk about that right now.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. DeBak. In addition to congratulating our 15 high achieving schools, I want to also congratulate Jefferson Elementary and Bernie Elementary Schools that have received certification for their pre-international baccalaureate programs. It's a very rigorous process that they went through, and it's exciting that both schools went through. McKinley is right on the cusp, and we anticipate that by the end of the year, we'll have McKinley there as well. So congratulations to those schools. Yeah, I attended with Ms. Nakamura the AP Biology College Bowl competition.
Science Bowl.
Science Bowl this Saturday morning. Saturday morning, Vince, when you were probably asleep. You had several of your classmates from La Jolla High School who were out at Sarah High School. We had teams from, let me see if I can remember all these. Mr. Nakamura, help me.
Okay. Henry, Morris, Lincoln, Mira Mesa, and La Jolla. And this was the very first one that they had. So next year, let's ramp it up. But a big round, the science teacher that organized it at, oh, in Sarah High School, of course, excuse me, that's where it was held. The science teacher at Sarah really coordinated this, and this was the first annual, but she's our high school teacher. our high school teacher of the year, in addition. So don't, he gets more time because I taught.
No, no, that's, it was a great thing to be a part of. I also want to, again, thank and encourage Assembly members Marty Block and Nathan Fletcher, who are moving forward our legislation to get our money back from class size penalties that would bring about $20 million back to this district, and that would enable us to keep class sizes low. That bill is passed now out of the Assembly Education Committee and is moving forward. So a great effort on behalf of Marty Block and Nathan Fletcher. And want to, as well, thank everybody who's had a chance to attend the Superintendent Search Town Hall meetings at Porter Elementary School, University City High, Sherman Elementary, and Pacific Beach Middle. And we have our final one tomorrow night, correct?
The final one tomorrow night is at Crespi Hall at Deportola from 6:00 to 8:30. And this is the last Superintendent Search Town Hall meeting, so, and it's in District B, which I represent. So if you haven't got your two cents in on this, you know, please come on out and join us. We hope to hear all of you.
That's right. And a very exciting event last week, or yeah, last week, University City High School Senior Exhibitions, incredibly well organized, the staff and community members from all over the city who were there to judge the exhibitions, along with juniors who were judging their seniors exhibitions. And just a fantastic job of the students that I was able to sit in on. Really exciting about where these seniors are headed. So that was terrific. May 8th, Saturday, May 8th, 10:00 AM, Sixth and Laurel in Balboa Park. Like Dr. Evans said, we need everybody there. We need to send an incredibly strong and loud statement back to Sacramento that we simply will not accept any more cuts to public education. This is a chance to get our voices heard. Saturday, May 8th, 10:00 AM, Sixth and Laurel. Please be there. Okay. Why don't we now move on to item FO2. This is the resolution in the matter of the reduction or elimination of classified services. Superintendent Koba?
President Barrera, I will turn this over to Sandra Quezso, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good evening, board members. What you have before you is a recommendation on the potential elimination based by bargaining units on the classified side of the House. We have a resolution per the bargaining unit where the recommendation includes the elimination of filled positions as well as vacancy assignments. You can consider this resolution one by one and make a decision with regards to what you would like to review, if you want to take action on the item as a whole, or separate it out in terms of what's filled and what is, remains vacant. So your choice would be to take a look at each of the resolutions and take an action on each of them individually. Is there a particular one you would like to begin with or discuss, or any questions in general?
Well, I think I would certainly prefer to separate with each of the bargaining units, the vacant positions from the filled positions. So perhaps we could get a motion to first take up the question of eliminating vacant positions? Somebody wants to make that motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we support the recommendation to remove all actual vacant positions. I'm not absolutely positive that this report is totally accurate. And so what I would expect is that should this list be, it should turn out that this list, which we all have, has some people that are actually in positions that those would not be a part of this motion. It's only vacant positions. Because what we have is a list of alleged vacant positions, not absolute.
But I also want to just be clear, Mr. DeBecque, about your motion. Are you proposing to actually eliminate the vacant positions, or to simply?
That's, yeah, that's what I would say.
Okay, all right.
I know there's alternatives, but that's the motion I'm making. If there's a second, fine.
Is there a second to Mr. DeBecque's motion to eliminate the positions that are actually vacant, I guess, in all four, is it four bargaining units that we're talking about?
It's five.
Five, in all five bargaining units. Is there a second to that motion? I would like to speak to the motion. I will oppose that motion. I believe it's a big mistake for us to eliminate these vacant positions. I think there's a difference between continuing our hiring freeze and, you know, for the potential future, while we're in our financial crisis, to not fill these vacant positions, which I think is critical to us meeting our budget target for next year. But I can't support eliminating the positions because I think that that, the elimination of these positions has to be a more thorough process that we go through, that actually should involve discussions between our staff and representatives from the different bargaining units to make distinctions between which of these positions are critical positions. It's critical work that needs to be done that's simply not getting done right now. Which of these positions is a critical work that's being done, but it's being done by overtaxing, you know, existing staff? Which of these positions is frankly not critical work that maybe the positions haven't been filled for years and should come off the books? I think that's an analysis and a discussion that needs to go on before we simply eliminate the vacant positions.
Can I speak to the motion?
Yeah. Ms. Jackson and Mr. DeBecque?
I can't support this either. I think that certainly, and I asked the question earlier, it's not just the principals and our organizers looking at the positions, but I think the administrative staff here to the positions too. I get very concerned when positions are eliminated that we may see a critical need for as our school year begins. I think that to keep the positions frozen would be better, because if we need it, then it's there, rather than totally just eliminating the position.
I understand that issue. And, but I also believe from my personal experience that what's happened in the past is that when we've done these, that as the need has arisen, we have authorized new positions. Now, to lock in, let's say, positions that, frankly, I don't fully understand the job descriptions because they're not as clear as they ought to be. And I'll just use one example, you know. The guidance aid is being used in multiple ways in different schools. Many times that guidance aid is used in what you'd think would be within the counseling department to help with the counselors, you know, do the work that the counseling office does around advising kids and assisting them with their guidance work. But in many schools, you find that those are actually attendance people. So it, to me, it makes more sense that there is a description of the job. And when we, when we do away with these jobs, and if they should come back, I know the board can make up their mind about whether they want to do it. But I think we should be more clear about the descriptions. Because, just using the example, if we were bumping in these positions, and we took somebody who'd been working in the counseling department and had a certain level of seniority, I'm not going to get into how many years or what, and then they had a right to bump, and they ended up going from a counseling job to an attendance clerk job because the two jobs had the identical title, I think that's a bad decision on our part. So when I go through these vacant positions and I look at them, I find a lot of them are jobs that are unclear in what they do. And so I personally support the idea of abolishing the positions and reemerging with the names of new jobs that have specific titles that I can understand and that the workers understand. And I understand the differences, but, you know, that's just my view on this. So, you know, as, I'll support my motion because I believe that that is what would be the outcome, would be a better naming of jobs and better job descriptions.
Okay. Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I second the motion because I did want to have a discussion about this. And for clarification, I wasn't even clear on what, which way the technicalities were in this. My concern was that we not eliminate certain positions and then have people move from those eliminations into vacant positions, which would cancel out the savings that we have. I agree with Mr. DeBecque that we shouldn't have jobs listed there that is not clear what they mean or whether we need to keep them. But I also agree that we need to have a clear process over time, making decisions about whether or not to eliminate those vacancies. So as long as the hiring freeze, I just, as long as the hiring freeze is in place, I don't see a need to eliminate the positions, because that was my only concern in terms of the elimination of positions that we're currently doing in relation to vacancies. So is that, is that correct, what I'm saying?
If I can just clarify, I think that the staff can definitely take a look at that vacancy list, do further analysis, and verify indeed that there are no incumbents, take a closer look in terms of what functions these positions do carry out, and then come back to the board with a recommendation. There are some vacant positions that have been vacant, so there is work that is no longer being done. But I think it's important that we come back to you with an analysis and separating out positions that we don't anticipate there would be a need, and we certainly want to take action and clean out some of those assignments. But it would mean going back and taking a look at that vacancy list and coming back to you with more analysis.
Okay. So in that sense, I would support waiting and not taking action on that now.
Ms. Nakamura?
Yeah, I agree with taking action, but let me make it clear, there isn't a job on this list that isn't needed. You know, we are cutting so close to the bone within the state of California and within the San Diego Unified School District that there isn't anyone, a principal, you know, who wouldn't want, you know, more personnel on site to help out. We're not doing this because these aren't needed. We're doing this because we have a budget crisis. And I think that frequently a position is, it may be vacant, but you know, as I have said before, sometimes someone just hasn't gotten around to filling it. So I'm not, you know, I appreciate the intent, Mr. DeBecque, but I'm not really in favor of absolutely eliminating these positions. I do, would like to see that analysis, though, with input from the principals, so.
Okay. Mr. DeBecque, you want to make?
Well, you know, it's pretty clear that we need an alternative motion. And the motion would be that we do not eliminate these positions, but that we maintain a hiring freeze and get back a report on the viability and the job descriptions that these include. We're going to save the same amount of money with a hiring freeze as we do with eliminating the positions.
Okay. With that clarification, I will second that.
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a number of public speakers, so I know that they want to speak to this entire issue, but why don't we call them up now, and then we can vote on this motion? So Judy Forre, Joan Collins, Nancy McGuire, Francis Fiero, Sylvia Alvarez, and David Fernandez.
Good evening. I'm Judy Forre. I'm with the California School Employees Association, and I'm proud to represent the parent educators of San Diego Unified. I can tell you that layoffs is nothing new to us. So I was going to address those vacant positions and the other positions. The only thing I think you need to understand is that you don't fill those vacant positions with long-term subs, and because they're needed. And I just wanted to let you know that today you're eliminating two classroom assistant positions. And over the years, we had over 1,500 classroom assistants in this district. And with the elimination of those two positions today, I don't know if you're aware, but we only have 19 classified classroom assistants in this district. When I talk to other people up and down the state and they ask me, "How many, you know, you've got a big district? How many classroom assistants do you have?" We have 19. That's it. That's all we have left. So it's nothing new to us. But I guess the most troubling thing I see here is that in this so-called tight budget times is the email that has gone out advertising seven vacancies for area superintendents with starting salaries from $112,000 to $144,000. I can tell you, that would more than pay for the parent educators that are being laid off today. So I guess I would just ask you to maybe look at your priorities, because I think the issue is here is students. And I can tell you with our special ed, our people are at their bones out there. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is David Fernandez. I'm the Labor Relations Representative for the California School Employees Association, the OTBS unit. Ms. Ward and Mr. Barrera, if you could just bear with me, I may take an extra minute and a half, because there's some documents that I don't want to thoroughly go through, but just know that they're factual. And when you guys have some spare time, I do want you to look at them. So there's actually three documents that are being presented to you right now. And then I'm going to hand out individually to two other documents for you. One of the first documents that you're going to be receiving, this document here, the one that you're getting, is back-to-back. This is close to 650 pages. This is from July 1st to January 31st. This is all the classified hourly work that has been given out to classified hourly positions, district-wide for every classified employee. It's extremely important that I point this out tonight, just due to the fact when we're talking about layoffs and talking about cuts, you have a document now that's in front of you that's only six months, seven months old, that has mass classified hourly positions. On top of that, you're going to be receiving another document that just has the OTBS, other hourly supplemental things that we've received. So in front of you tonight, you have a board document that says it's 178 or 172 OTBS positions. I'm providing you some documents today that over the last six or seven months, you have spent close to $3.5 million to $4.5 million on OTBS hourly positions, where we have open vacancies and open everything for all of our OTBS bargaining members. A third document that you're going to be receiving, about a year ago today, I spoke in front of the board, and I rarely speak in front of the board, but I reminded the board about the SERP of what was going to happen or what could actually happen. At that point in time, Dr. Greer was the superintendent. And Dr. Greer stated to the board and to the general public that he would be allowing 30 different people who SERP'd to go ahead and come back on a temporary basis. You'll be provided a document that has all the SERP earnings from July 1st until January 31st. That's when the report was run. And there's close to 195 different names on this. Hourly rates that this district has paid to administrators, retired administrators in the excess of $85 an hour for their services. Employees that SERP'd and brought them back, who are not part of the original 30 list that Dr. Greer had provided to this Board of Education. I'm going to hand out, just, and just, this will be brief. I do appreciate the fact where we talk about bringing stakeholders to the table. In front of you, and I, Ms. Nakamura and Mr. DeBecque, I do appreciate the fact of not calling out district employees' names in front of, in front of the board. And basically, I'll just use the term, the Human Resource Office at this point. In front of you, you have a document, it's called Board Docs. Board NSF is the title. And you have your resolution that's going in front of the board tonight. In that list, you have 178 OTBS positions, 60 filled, 118 vacant. On the next few pages, and it starts with, if you see a 60 on the left-hand corner of the spreadsheet, those are the actual vacant, those are the actual people that have people in those positions. What I've done for you is I've costed out, something that I've asked your HR department to do for me, to cost it out on a monthly basis, and then on a yearly basis. And then at the bottom of that page, you can see the running total of the millions of dollars, just on the first page, of what the savings is. But the discrepancy here is that if you go to the third page of that document, you'll see my running totals of the 60 positions, close to $2.3 million in savings. And then on top of that, there's 53 benefited positions. And I just took a ballpark picture of what your benefit package cost, and I just put $10,000, just for argument's sake, for another $530,000. The next few pages is where it gets really interesting for the OTBS bargaining unit. I'm all I'm almost done. On Friday of last week, I met with district administrators, and I asked for two simple favors when I met with them over my layoffs. One, a decision-maker that's in the room, that can make a decision for me. And two, when I receive my vacancy list, I want to know when the vacancy occurred. As Labor Relations Representative, I have two of them in the audience with me. We do something called Follow the Money or Follow the Positions. We try to track our positions. The excuse here in San Diego Unified School District is that we don't have position control, we don't know how to do it. So for myself, Letitia, and Judy Forre, we have to do it ourselves. This is the most disturbing thing of the entire thing of this layoff tonight. And I appreciate the fact when you guys say to come back with these vacancies. In your board document under the Brown Act that you've given to everybody, you or this district, your board administration, said that there was 118 vacant classified positions. If you look at the document that was provided to you in your board documents, and it says 118, I don't know where that number comes from, because when I add up the numbers, there's about 136 vacancies on this list. For an example, you can take a look at, going to the, if you look at the physical therapy specialist or the occupational therapy specialist, on the fourth page into it of the vacancies, there's a 7.3 vacant position that's listed in this. What somebody did is ran you a spreadsheet and counted a line-by-line number of 118. On this spreadsheet that you have been given, there's actually more than 118 vacancies on there. Lastly, on the last page of the documents that you received, what I just said, that I had asked HR to provide me two things, a decision-maker and when I knew when my vacancies were opened. I was provided a document that was given on February 1st of 2010, not a very timely, not a very timely document when I'm trying to figure out cuts for 178 different classified employees. Here's the disturbing thing, when we talk about our vacancy list. If you look at the vacancy list that I've provided you that's in your board documents, on the very left-hand corner, you'll see little checkmarks on it. The vacancy list that was given to me on February 1st, that was just given to me yesterday in email, that provided me with the information for my vacancies, you'll see checkmarks on that also. Those are the only positions that line up with the positions that's in your board documents today. These other ones, I have no idea where they're at. I'm told that all the EOSs are being eliminated. Nobody will be able to bump into them. But on the document that was given me February 1st and then resent to me yesterday stating what my vacancy list is and the dates on it, there's still EOSs on here at Stanley, Morris, and Claremont, though I'm told in a meeting on Friday that they're 100% eliminated. I asked that the board pull the agenda item, not only for the OTBS bargaining, for the other classified units. This is something that we've talked to HR over and over about, that these lists, that your numbers that you're given are not accurate numbers, and until they can sit down with the associations and tell us what the vacancies are and what the true vacancies are, is the only way for us to negotiate the effects of those decisions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Frances Fiero, Chapter 788, the Office Technical and Business Services. Good evening. Here we go again, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the OTBS bargaining unit. Currently, the district is seeking concessions from the OTBS bargaining unit. In front of you tonight is this resolution to eliminate 178 classified positions, of those, 118 are vacant. An issue that the OTBS unit has is that there has been an ongoing savings from not paying health and welfare benefits for these positions. In our opinion, these savings have equated to more than $500,000 just for the OTBS unit alone. Why are we not using these monies to help offset any layoffs? The district has once again over-budgeted health and welfare benefits for '09, '10 school year. Are we going to put these savings back into the health and welfare benefit plan? In the initial budget talks, this board and this administration discussed not balancing the budget on our backs. This administration and this board is balancing the budget on 178 OTBS members. The OTBS bargaining unit is still feeling the effects of the severe budget cuts made by the Burson era. And these buttons, guess when we made these? Mr. Burson wore one. We're still going through this. During my six years as the OTBS president, I have never received as many phone calls from stressed and overworked members. Once again, we're balancing the budget on the backs of classified employees. The OTBS bargaining unit has gone from approximately 2,200 to 1,400 working members. Equity? Fairness? I don't think so.
Good afternoon, President Badat, Board. My name is Sylvia Alvarez. I'm a Health Services caseworker. I'm a job steward. I'm also First VP for OTBS. I don't know what to say to you about layoffs, but who's going to do the work? That's my only question. I'd like to speak specifically to SandApp program. I'd like my coworkers and colleagues to please stand. We are, again, this third year, this is the third time I've come to you, the third time we've come to you. We understand there's maybe a loss in funding. What I don't understand is why seniority does not mean anything in this program. Why it doesn't mean anything to be vested in your job. Why my colleagues back there with 10 and 13 years are facing a layoff when there's people less senior, three, four years, only because they don't speak Spanish? As you saw, we have a diverse multicultural staff, and they have been doing the job. If you look at our management, there's no diversity, and none of them speak Spanish. So I ask you, how is that fair and how is that such a program need? I ask you to please look at these layoffs, and we understand that the layoffs, if they have to be done in our program, do them and do it fairly. Do it from the bottom up, as the way our program supervisor told us she would do it. And now again, the third time is not doing that. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. This is, I'm Nancy McGuire. Okay, equity. What is equity? It means fairness, honesty, reasonableness, and fair-mindedness. I'm here to speak on behalf of the classified OTBS employees who are facing a five-day furlough. Many of our classified employees have been furloughed for six days since July 2004, and this board and the administration is requesting a concession of five furlough days from our OTBS employees. Our bargaining unit has already saved the district $506,000 annually for the past five years, which equates to $2.5 million. The impact of this is not just on the classified employees, but will also have some significant impact on the services, employees, and the services that students receive. This would greatly impact many of our single families, households, by reducing their salaries by nearly 4%, and the 11 furlough days is just not an option for us. I ask you if this sounds fair and reasonable.
Good afternoon, Board members, President Barrera, Superintendent Koba. Thank you for your consideration and looking at this carefully. Thank you that it's not one slate vote. These are, these are positions that affect the children here at San Diego Unified School District, and I thank you for looking at them in that, in that way. There was a couple that surprised me that were on there today in my backyard. I'm hoping that we'll get some resolve in those. We were hit also, as the OTBS in Paris were in '03, out at the warehouse, still trying to recoup. And again, last year, we were hit again, the truck drivers. So I just wanted to thank you for your consideration and looking at these positions and how we do affect and impact the children in the school district. And we're here to do the work, and I just want to add that we can do the work. We don't need to outsource it. Thank you.
Okay, we've got Joellen Archer, Letitia Mungia, Rebecca Simmons, Matthew Egbrecht, Marcia Baruta, Sheila Bowling, Deborah Beaver, Sharon Powell, and Alisa Moreno.
Good evening, School Board members and Interim Superintendent Koba. I'm a property owner in Katherine Nakamura's district. I've been reminding her that yearly. And I'm also a grandmother of five students in San Diego Unified. And so tonight, I'm going to be speaking on your eliminating of the EOS positions. Next year, I will have three grandchildren in high school who will now lose out on opportunities for internships, for knowledge, career knowledge, things that are necessary, things that would help them apply to college also, help them know their interests, help them know the career path they need to take through college. These are not something you can get back. These positions are exactly hitting students, and they're hitting students all over the district. I don't understand how you can keep these open and still have the managers there, which is what you're doing. You're eliminating the EOS, but the managers in those programs are still there. I don't know who they're going to manage. I have questions for two others for you. You have occupation and physical therapists on the vacancy list, but every year, you contract out at $125 an hour for occupational therapists and physical therapists because the district cannot hire enough to run for the students and the program they need. So I hope these vacancies are the ones that you're contracting out that haven't been filled. Also, in risk management, all the vacancies are there in risk management. In fact, it's all the people that are there in risk management, except for the two managers. Who are those two managers going to manage? And do they really not need any of those people in risk management? Why do we have the department? These are just some of the questions we can find out on our own. We would like you to get better information. Thank you.
Letitia Mungia, CCA Labor Relations Representative with the Operations Support Services Unit. I speak to you today on the elimination of the vacancy positions that you have before you. I am extremely concerned about the immediate action, if you should move forward on this. I believe that the decision to move forward when your information is not accurate, it's not contemporaneous, some of the positions that Joanie Collins mentioned to you are positions that we have been fighting to have filled at the local level. In addition to that, we have AV techs who were, have been told, and they've been on hold since last summer. People took the SERP. We lost 103 working unit members who took the SERP. Not one of those positions has been permanently filled since the SERP. There's already a current backfill. I ask that you don't move on the vacancies, that you don't eliminate them. It'll put us in a spiral of a detrimental effect to all of our units, specifically when we look at the positions that are causing us operational necessities now, that I ask that you, that you proceed with caution and that you do do what President Barrera has asked, is that you sit, that management sits with the union groups as they make the decision of criticality instead of making decisions in a vacuum, which is what you have before you. Thank you.
Rebecca Simmons, Children's Center Clerk, Deans, a Child Development Center. Board members, I'm here not to speak to you about saving my job. Thankfully, I'm not on the list of names that have been compiled. I'm here to remind you that I and my sisters and brothers are the ones who make your jobs possible. We are the ones, both in your central offices and your schools, who have the knowledge necessary to compile the information that generates the reports, the reports necessary for your funding. We are ambassadors for this district. As a Children's Center clerk, I have families with two-year-old children seeking a safe, secure environment to leave their children in while they provide for their families. As their first contact with the district, they will, in a blink of an eye, decide if San Diego Unified is a place for their child based on their interaction with me. These classified employees that seek to cut are ambassadors at other levels of this district, too. Do you really wish to make so many cuts in the very unit that make this, makes this district look so appealing to families when they have so many options to go elsewhere? Historically, we've been the whipping boys for budget cuts. Those of us, sorry, those of you who have publicly stated that you will no longer balance your budget on us are doing that very thing right now. It's time that we look and take responsibility for making honest cuts and look at all units in the district equally. You have the opportunity tonight to do that, and I'm hoping that you will.
My name is Matthew Egbrecht, and I'm a SandApp case manager. SandApp is facing layoffs that are unfair in regard to the people being laid off, and I'm asking you tonight to please not accept the layoffs as they stand. I'm a case manager with 13 years of seniority, yet I am, people with much less seniority than me are staying on, and I am being eliminated. Also, there are no supervisors that speak, that are bilingual, yet they talk about the importance of having bilingual case management. Also, none of the supervisors, though we are losing 35% of the students that we case manage and 50% of the case managers, we are losing 0% of our supervisors. This is wrong, it's unfair, and I ask you again, please do not accept the list of layoffs with SandApp. Thank you.
My name is Marcia Baruta. I live at 4124 Campus Avenue, Apartment 3. I'm here speaking as a community member. I'm really concerned, I'm hoping that everyone will show up for the rally on Sunday because I think what you said, no more.
Saturday, May.
Saturday. No more cuts in education. Cuts is the absolute wrong way that we should be going to be building a better future. I'm also very concerned about the high unemployment in our communities. And one of the things that I'm going to leave you with is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development chart on San Diego's median income. And what's, the lists that are being put out today about the cuts are really hitting the lowest-paid workers in the system. Every one of the workers, I suggest, fall in the low-income to very low-income to perhaps even extremely low-income categories. And that's not fair, it's not good for our community, and it's certainly not good for the children. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Powell. I am a Health Services caseworker one with the SandApp program. I am the parliamentarian for the OTBS bargaining unit. I'm a parent in this district and a community activist. I see some of you throughout the community and all sorts of work that we're doing to better education. I'm here to you today to ask you, just like you've got a motion, and not to eliminate the vacancies just when one fails, that you're going to look at it. I ask you to look at the SandApp program. I've come to you before when my name was the only name that was submitted in the SandApp program, but every time there's eliminations, my name is on that. And it will happen, and I will be eliminated or laid off or whatever, and I'll take that. But what I ask is do it with accuracy, do it knowing that you have all the facts, do it knowing that we it knowing that we negotiated a contract with this district that said you would follow that contract and you would lay off based on seniority and follow a process. A process hasn't been followed. For 10 and 1/2 years, I've been a Health Services Case Manager. I've managed students throughout this district and county, irregardless of what language they speak. I have never once, nor have I seen my coworkers, been pulled aside and said, "We're taking this family away from you because you do not speak Spanish." You just mentioned walking the halls of a school that's predominantly Hispanic. You did not go to teachers and say, "Please leave because you are not bilingual." Our management, who is not bilingual, is saying, "Please leave because you're not." I say, "If you're going to ask me to leave, ask me because my name came up on this seniority list, as well it should, not any other way." Thank you.
Buenas tardes. My name is Elisa Moreno. And first of all, President Barrera, I want to thank you for mentioning that you attended the senior exhibition at University City and that it was a success. I want to let you know that that effort was due to an employer outreach specialist. I have been employed as an employer outreach specialist for two and 1/2 years with the district, and I want to tell you that when I got this job, I told my friends that I was working for San Diego Unified, and I was very proud of it because I saw many of the activities that I also coordinated because I worked for nonprofits. So I had an ongoing relationship with San Diego Unified District before being employed. And I want to let you know, in case the audience is not familiar, what employer outreach specialists do. What we do is, how many of you read the superintendent's Friday notes? Okay. I want to let you know that I have been, the one has been promoting, if you've been reading, the School of Community Health and Medical Practices, as well as the School of Law and Business at Crawford. Many of those activities, whether job shadows, internships, senior exhibitions, career fairs, presenters in the classroom, paid and unpaid internships, that has been due to the effort of the employer outreach specialist. And I am only here to let you know that I'm very sad that all of those positions have been eliminated. A lot of these employees have been here with the district, with you, for 10 years, and it's very sad. And I don't know what they're going to be helping, who's going to be helping the students with all this. If you have ever worked for the school district and tried to organize a field trip, it's not just a matter of taking the students there. It takes paperwork, it takes planning, coordination, parent permission slips, I mean, a myriad of things. Who's going to be doing that? I don't know. So I'm wondering, San Diego Unified District is no longer going to be provided paid and unpaid internships, field trips, senior exhibitions, career fairs? I'm just wondering. Thank you.
Good evening, board, president and superintendent. My name's Deborah Beaver, Senior Accounting Clerk, Support Services at PPO. My position is not eliminated this time on your list, but I speak for all my members and the kids at the school sites and the schools that we support. I ask that you obviously not approve this resolution, but not just the vacant positions whose numbers seem to be so skewed, but also the ones that are filled. I think those numbers might be a little off, too. Mr. DeBeck, you mentioned you'd like to know what a, whatever that job description was.
Yeah, I know. It was a--
Those are other duties as assigned, sir.
God and saved, what?
Yeah, those are other duties as assigned.
I know. That's not right.
Right, it's not right. All of us that, I would say, for the most part, that work care very deeply about the school district and the kids and do what's tasked to us. Don't take our breaks, don't take lunch, take work home, stay late, don't turn in comp time cards, and then talk about it later and wish that it was different. So I ask that you take a better look at this. I might also say, maybe the Human Resource Department got cut, and maybe that's why they can't make their lists. Correct. You might look back, OTBS positions that were cut in Human Resources. I'm sure that there are some people in this audience that could tell you that. Those are OTBS positions that keep track of that stuff, besides the managers, of course, that I'm sure have a handle on it. So I thank you for taking a closer look and wearing your buttons with pride. Thank you.
Also called out by Treasure Love. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Sheila Bowling, and my address is on file. I would ask the board to recognize the financial sacrifice that the OTBS members have been making since July of 2004 with the current six-day furlough. This means that for six years, no other employee group has made the same budgetary sacrifices that OTBS has. It is financially and logically wrong to not recognize this fact and then to ask OTBS unit members to give another five-day furlough when the burden has not been fairly shared among all shoulders. We cannot afford the proposed 11-day furlough while others only contribute with a five-day furlough. Is our work any less than any other employees' groups? Are we less important to you? It would appear to be that that's the case. Is this the picture that you are willing to portray? Please do the right thing by recognizing our contribution and by making a fair decision regarding the proposed furlough. Thank you.
Good afternoon, president and the board. My name is Treasure Love. I work as an elementary school assistant at Juarez Elementary School, and I'm here just to bring to your attention, I don't know if it's been brought to your attention before, but I ask you to take a better look at the layoffs and the furloughs in that the money that this district is losing just with PeopleSoft and SAM system. I brought this to the attention of HR. I came down and had a meeting. Our SAM system, when you have certificated people put in as an hourly person for a partial day, three hours, when they come for professional development or literacy support or something, it goes automatically over into PeopleSoft as an eight-hour day. Unless this is checked, and people don't know to check this, people are getting, substitutes are getting paid for an eight-hour position, eight-hour day, when they've only worked a few hours a day. It has been brought to my attention that this cannot be changed. And I'd like the board to realize, we are losing a lot of money. People will not come forward when they are a substitute and say that "I only work three hours and getting paid for eight." So there's other ways of saving money. This district spends money in ways, I'm part of the budget, I have to plan, I was with the budget analyst all day this week, last week, Friday, excuse me. And there's other ways of saving monies beside layoffs and the furloughs. We just have to look into the picture. I don't even know if this has been brought to your attention, but the programs that we're using are not working either. Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, we have a motion on the table, and that is to not eliminate any vacant positions, provided the hiring freeze remains in effect. And we've got a second, Mr. DeBeck.
Yeah, well, I have a, I actually thought for a few minutes about it, and I have a problem with the motion.
Okay.
And the reason I have a problem is if the freeze includes filling or not filling presently filled positions, then what you do is, one at a time, you have a freeze and you never get back the people that you already have employed right now. You know, don't replace them. For example, let's say you have a school secretary 2. Okay, we got a freeze. So now, that person leaves to go with her husband somewhere or whatever, decides to be a grandmother, or whatever she wants to be, and now that position's vacant. If we freeze it, the school won't get a secretary 2, but it has one now. So that's not what I intended. So what I'm saying is, I say that we should not freeze those jobs that are presently filled.
Uh-huh.
And that's understood within this motion.
Okay.
I don't know how to say it right.
That's my understanding.
But my point is that the motion was that we continue the freeze--
In the current vacancies.
Except for those positions that are currently occupied that need to be filled in the future.
Yeah.
Okay?
I understand that as well.
That's the intent of the motion.
Ms. Ward, is that clear in terms of the intent of the motion?
And Mr. Koba can probably speak to it better, but my understanding is--
I think it's understood and understandable.
--the freeze includes the site, critical needs, and that we are filling those positions.
Yeah.
Not on a case-by-case basis. It's only those sites that have a vacancy that comes up get to fill them.
And the business rules of the freeze.
I think he caught the essence.
And I guess the only thing that I would add to that, which I would hope is understood, is that a hiring freeze is a hiring freeze, and hiring hourly workers to fill vacancies is not, you know, that's, that's not consistent with the notion of a hiring freeze. So when we talk about not eliminating vacant positions, providing the hiring freeze remains in effect, my understanding is that the hiring freeze remains in effect, meaning we're not then going to turn around and fill those vacant positions with hourlies. So I guess--
Well, I remember this being a problem, but I'm not going to discuss it.
So I don't know whether I need to make an amendment to the motion, or if that's also something that's clear among board members.
Well, I--
It's clear among board members that's how it's implemented.
Could we just want to make a vote on that and then discuss the hourly and other items with the other part of the resolution? Because it's two parts.
Yeah, no, I know, there are two parts.
Yeah, because I would--
I just wanted to comment, and what we're doing with this motion is basically sending back to the administration to look over the vacancy list and specifically to investigate a lot of the things that we heard about today.
But we're not, what we're basically saying, the list still stays, that basically those positions are all there, and maybe that the numbers will change, but we're saying we're freezing hiring for vacant positions.
For the vacancies, yes.
For vacant positions.
For vacant positions, yes.
And what we don't have is a clear handle on what the vacant positions are, but that's not part of this motion at all. It's just, don't hire for vacant positions.
Point of clarification, we're still going to allow the superintendent for critical needs to fill positions on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, the point I wanted to make was that some very good points had been brought up, and I think these all need to be taken into consideration. There's the issue about, and this even goes beyond this, but you know, certainly as far as SandApp in terms of how the layoffs are occurring, and we're not even talking about layoffs at this point, but that needs to be looked at. The issue of the occupational therapists and physical therapists, where we were saving money by hiring in and not contracting out, making sure that's taken care of. The other issue that was brought up that was very important by the speaker is was the issue of if a particular program or part of a program is eliminated and all of the, let's say, the workers within that program are eliminated, but the manager is still there, is that justified or not? I mean, I'm not saying one way or the other, but that has to be looked at. And there were just several other good examples, so I just hope that that's all taken into consideration by the staff.
Okay, so why don't we vote on this first motion? Okay.
So now, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
For the other part of this, the current field positions, I move that we table this, send it back to staff, and I'll speak to it if a second.
Certainly.
It was said earlier, and it's very true, every year, we balance the budget on the classified staff. Now, classified staff, please understand that we don't make money, the state has no money, and we are going to have to trim our budget. But I don't like it on the backs of classified staff. I say this every year as well. These are our neediest employees. These are the people that are in our district that we supposed to take care of, part of our family. Some of them are making just above our living wage. Many of them are the ones that have students in our district, and we're sitting here at 60% free and reduced lunch. This is our family. And all too often, we get to this point every year because we have a 45-day window that we can impose on these employees, so we use it. I have a problem with it because it is our neediest group, and people, I didn't support across the board, 5-day furlough, because I know this group has taken furloughs. I know that we try to get some of that corrected over the past few years, and in some instances we have. But you can't take a family that is barely making enough to survive on, that's coming to work for our students, day in and day out, and say you have to take the equal amount of cuts as our employees that are making six-figure salaries. Just can't do that. So I would ask that the items that were mentioned, and Dr. Evans just mentioned some of them, I think that all those items should be looked into. I also think that we have to look at things differently. What I mean by that is, as we look at even with our current allocations of five days and shifting of our staff, we may have schools that have up to 38% of shifting modifications in their staff. And then we expect our schools to do well. We may have schools that because of bumping, if when we do figure out what we're going to do is force layoff, have transition in the office staff. Now, we went through this a few years ago, where we laid off the office staff and our numbers plummeted because the people who did that work weren't there, they weren't trained. So I would ask my peers to send this back. We can have another meeting. We've had several emergency meetings. We can certainly have another one in order to meet the timeline that we need to issue layoff notices to this group. So I'm not saying no layoffs, I'm just saying that we do smart layoffs for this particular group. Thank you.
It's, I'll comment, and there might be other comments. As much as I agree with the points that Ms. Jackson is making, and as much as I'd like to support Ms. Jackson's motion, I can't. And I can't because if we don't take this action tonight, we will cut into our savings, and we're, you know, so razor-thin right now in terms of our ability to balance the budget that I just don't think that we can do that. What I would say is, I think there are real questions, and I know Superintendent Koba has been following up on these questions around the SandApp layoffs and whether the process has been proper. So I guess we'll still, you know, vote on Ms. Jackson's motion, which I cannot support, but what I would support is taking the SandApp positions out of this for now until we get until we get clarity on these questions that we're trying to ask.
One of the things in terms of we're making a change tonight, if we are, if we were not going to do certain reductions in staff at a particular point in time, is we need to have an alternative in terms of that money. I'm not, you know, feeling good about making any of these cuts. We've seen the situation, for example, with the teaching staff, that we realized that we need to eliminate 259 teaching positions. I'm just using that as an example. I know every bargaining unit is different, but we have held firm on that. Now, because we are eliminating 259 teaching positions does not necessarily mean that we are going to lay off that number. In fact, the number is going to be less than that, and we don't know exactly how many yet. But the issue is, we made some very difficult decisions a couple months ago about this is how we can keep our schools operating, this is how we can keep open, and it involved sacrifices in terms of furloughs, it involved sacrifices in terms of limited targeted reductions in staff, it included more severe cuts in terms of central office staff. And so, that's what's difficult. I mean, I think it would, I very much agree that I would not like to do this, but I think what we need to do is take this step in terms of this number that we need to reduce, and then we need to begin working on what we can do to mitigate that situation. And for example, again, with the teachers, we're looking at attrition and other ways to gradually fill in some of the positions, but we have to do that very carefully. In terms of the SandApp, I guess-- In terms of the, the Sand App, I guess the issue there to me, that's not a reduction in positions situation. It's, it's a, a layoff situation. And that comes after the reduction in position. And even the, the Sand App people have said they're made in various places, unfortunately, have to be certain positions eliminated. They just want to make sure that if that happens, that that's done fairly. And I don't think that anything that we're doing tonight prevents that in terms of us investigating to make sure that that's done in a proper and fair manner. These are difficult things to do, but I think that's what everybody's saying that needs to be done in an equitable way.
Yeah. We've been through this, as a number of you have said, over a number of years. And it's just terribly unfortunate. The economy in the, in the country, but particularly in the state of California, is such an absolute mess. I think the economy is turning, but I think it's going to be very, very slow. And unfortunately, our job up here is to make decisions that staunch the, the flow out of this district of money. And I think by avoiding these today, we're only going to make matters worse later. It is, we've got, you know, significant, severe reductions that we can expect over the next couple of years as the stimulus money is gone. It's, it's going to be, I think, important to make decisions right now, as difficult as they are, that, that help us a little bit further down the road. I want to say, no one, in all the years that I have, it's been my sad duty to sit up here and make decisions, no one has ever worked harder at trying to find the money and the numbers and the position. I think that over the last couple of years, we've developed tools that we did not have before. We've developed skills that we did not have before, and we've put people in place that we did not have before, who truly cared and who worked, some of themselves, you know, to the point of exhaustion, trying to find these numbers and trying to avoid this decision. But as sad as it is, I think we do have to make this, this choice. I think we have to make these decisions, and as the May revise comes back from the governor, if the economy does improve, you know, certainly we can bring them back. But I don't make any of these decisions on the basis that these are unnecessary, or not needed, or unimportant, or in any way trivial. I know that each one of the people in question here, each one of these positions, support our students. But right now, the decisions that we need to make are what's going to protect our students' education, and what's going to make sure that they have what they need as they move on into the future. And unfortunately, that means, that means hard decisions. But I can tell you that in my time on the board, I have never seen a stronger effort. I have seen people that have wanted to do what they could do and didn't have the tools or didn't have the ability, but I've never seen people care more or work harder to understand these numbers and to try and find answers to avoid every single position. And it is, I know that's small solace to anybody who's losing their job, but I think it's a decision that we have to make today. And, you know, I regret it, but I'm hoping that it's, again, as the May revise comes forward, as the economy brightens, and I believe it will, that we'll be able to, to pull these, these back. But we can only do what we can do.
We've got a, we've got a motion on the floor in a second to, to table the, their action on the notices to the filled positions. Mr. DeBak?
Yeah. Well, I have to point out one thing. I'm, I'm in support, of course, of the motion, but in the case of Sand App, I think the job description of the health services caseworker, if it had required Spanish in the first place, or if it had a job description that required it, that'd be one thing. But I don't see any reason for a person to be laid off relative to their language when their job description didn't require it.
I'd like to chime in on that.
Okay. I mean, I'm sorry, but I've worked, I've worked in a classroom with kids that spoke only Spanish, and I was able to, I think, teach appropriately. And I, I, you know, I know I used bilingual aids when they were available and enjoyed their, their, their help. But for us to have a job that didn't require that, that in the first place. Now, if you, if you set up a job and you set a job description with health services caseworker or Spanish-speaking, that would be a different issue, but those weren't set this way, as far as I'm aware. Now...
If I may clarify...
What?
If I may clarify, there is the job classification within the Sand App program that does include bilingual versus non-bilingual.
Yeah, but then, these people that were on this list are not listed that way. So what you're doing is lumping them together. So that if you, if you say you don't need, you know, you don't need a, a person that you had working with Spanish-speaking kids for years, and then you created a new job title, all of a sudden, I don't think it's appropriate to lay the ones off you had in the first place. That's just my personal view.
We need to border...
It's also true... Don't, don't do that. It doesn't matter. You know, I'm old. I just do what I think's right. But the point is that the same thing would go for the teaching staff. You know, if we had a requirement that you had to be bilingual to teach in this school district, we'd have a heck of a lot less teachers. And I don't think we should single out a classified group for the same reason. So that's where I'm at. I mean, I'm sorry.
Senator Warren.
Certainly, staff would make sure that procedures were followed with regards to stand-up and any other program reductions.
If this was defeated, if this, then, then you'd have to upgrade all of them to that job description, in my opinion. But anyway, I'm going to say that I, you know, as, if this fails and we come back with another motion, I'm still going to try to single out the Sand App part as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think that this, I think we're going to need a special motion with regard to Sand App. And while, actually, I do have an appreciation for certainly, you know, the need for Spanish-speaking in this particular instance. It's, it's, it is distressing that it keeps coming back and back, but I think, I just want to recommend and make sure if we do this, that we actually take an action separately and not just fold it in.
Sure. Okay, let's vote on that.
Okay, why don't, why don't we vote on this motion? Ms. Jackson, do you have...
Just one more, one final comment. I know we make difficult decisions, and I don't mind making difficult decisions. But the, the fact of the matter is, is that we have a lot of information thrown at us. We have questions about it, and we make decisions before some of that is clarified. We know on the board that last year, we had something like $16 million in people spending, going over their budgets. So we know there is some areas and rooms for, for cleanup. I'm not asking that we not do any layoffs to this particular group. I'm asking that we do smart layoffs. I'm asking that we take another day or two, and as I said earlier, we've had emergency sessions before we, we took time to look at things before we voted on it. And I'm just asking that we take a little bit more time. We just got another pile of reading materials that I think that we should actually look at before we make this decision. And so that is my, my motion, is that, not that we delay this and delay it, but that we take a day or two to at least be able to look at what we were given this afternoon if we make this final decision.
Okay. Please vote on Ms. Jackson's motion. Okay. So now, do we have a motion in support of the resolution to...
Bill moved.
Second.
Okay. And I guess I would just, and we, I think we've all talked about this. Can we amend the motion where we take the Sand App positions out?
I would amend it not only for Sand App, but for risk management as well. And I mean, I do have a concern for departments eliminating all of its workers except for the management. That is a great concern to me as well. So if I can amend it with both risk management and Sand App, I'll be fine.
I'm only accepting the Sand App.
How many positions are we talking about in risk management? Three? Okay. It seemed like the point that was made by the speakers was that if you were eliminating three positions, that you should do away with the manager.
The factors are vacant positions that are being filled by hourly.
Okay. Can you, can you speak to that one, Mr. Koba, as far as...
Actually, I, I'm manager of risk management.
Okay.
So I, I'm new here, three months. We have six full-time positions in risk management, and three of them are vacant. We have one manager position, one supervisor of workers' comp, and one unemployment specialist filled.
So is the proposal then about the positions within risk management, are they on the vacant list, or are they on the filled list?
They are vacant, and as far as I know, they weren't scheduled to be eliminated. Currently, there are hourly positions, people filling those vacancies. My understanding is that we are losing one of those hourly persons today who accepted another position. So we have not filled any of our vacancies.
But you've been using hourly's.
Again, we're filling the vacancies if we're using hourly's, so I mean...
No, I mean, we, we have not been able to fill any of those things, and I don't know, I wasn't here when the decision was made to put hourly folks in there, but we do have three vacancies that are not filled by full-time employees.
And could you continue doing that without that, or without hourly's either?
Well, we have to, we are outsourcing two of our claims functions. No, we out, we outsource currently all of our workers' compensation claims handling to a third-party administrator because we currently have approximately 2,000 open workers' compensation claims. We also outsource the liability claims handling function to a third-party administrator. We have between 90 and 100 litigated and non-litigated claims.
We do this.
If I can just clarify, in terms of the positions that were discussed within risk management, you will see those listed under the vacancy list. And one of the things that we will be doing is analyzing those assignments in regards to making sure that we are identifying positions that will still be critical to be filled and making future recommendations.
Say that with regard to the, given the superintendent discretion.
Right.
So at this point with that...
They would fall under the vacancy list right now.
Okay, there are definitely some problems to look at there, but within the current resolution we're looking at, we're not looking at three currently employed employees?
No, people don't.
Okay.
So we've got a, we've got an amendment to the motion, to the motion on the floor.
Then I'll just amend the Sand App for you.
Okay, so now it just, it just applies to Sand App. I just, you know, we, we need to do an immediate analysis of where we have positions being filled by hourly employees. And, and where that is the case, I believe we need to open those positions up and fill them with permanent employees.
Not at all or nothing, though. It's a problem because you got a two or three-hour job.
Okay, so we've got a, we've got a motion on the floor to take the Sand App positions off of the...
For analysis.
Well, I'm going to clean them off then. I thought it was a total vote. I thought you were including that in the motion.
This is just a motion.
It's just a, just a motion first. It's, it's an amendment to the motion that we'll vote on now, which is to take the Sand App positions off of the list.
But my understanding is to take them off and have it analyzed. It's not a final decision about Sand App.
Right. It's not, I mean, it's, it's, to take a look at the needs of the department. I mean, if there is truly a need for, for, you know, you know, bilingual skills within that department, but it's hard to understand that it would be the entire department, you know, so we're asking for some analysis, but, and putting those particular positions on hold for the time being. Can I ask what, what fiscal impact that might have? Is this going to really eliminate the ability to make changes if we need to?
These are all positions that are funded by state or local city grants, and the only reason they're on the layoff list is because we've been given warning that these funds are in jeopardy to expire on the 30th of September, and we have no other option but to proceed with some HR action on this. And I think Dr. Foltzer has more information.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to diminish the fine work of the Sand App staff. They've performed great and valiantly over the years. It should first be noted, though, that as Mr. Koba said, 100% of Sand App funding is from state and local contracts and grants. Now, what, what that means, of course, is, is a few things. That, that grant money, the first five money, is set to expire on October 30th. Now, our hope, and we discuss this with HR, our hope, the program supervisor who couldn't be here tonight, was to keep those employees protected in, in some way, shape, or form. We were advised to add those names to the list. Now, we're fairly certain that we'll secure some funding between now and October or September 30th. But in the meantime, we were advised to add those names to the list of eliminations.
Now, there were two things that, if I could just, if I could just offer, there were two things that were considered. Seniority was, was one consideration, and then the needs of the client were the others. And that's the reason. And one of the, one of the descriptions
for the program does allow for a bilingual staff member to fill those positions.
So Dr. Foltzer, let me just, because I want to clarify, if, it is our intention to keep the staff in place at least through the expiration of the grant, which would be in October, correct?
That's correct. Those staff members will be granted temporary recall status.
Well, but if that's the case, I don't understand why we're under a 45-day deadline to notice those folks now. I mean, it seems like we should be able to wait until we are up against that 45-day deadline if they're going to be kept on board anyway.
Well, that was our hope as well. We were advised to by HR, and maybe Sandra can speak to that.
I think the intent is to keep the employees unemployed until that deadline. However, one of the things that we would, don't know at this point is whether or not those funds would be renewed.
I understand.
So in regards to making a separate layoff at that time, it might be best to at least notify them now. And then if they're able to stay, they stay, and we can just basically rescind those notices. But I think it's important for people to understand that they may have some options in regards to just being employed through those couple of months, and then other options may not be available.
Okay, we had Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson, Mr. DeBak, and Dr. Evans.
Okay, just might, might as be fairly quick, but I hope. So if, in fact, all the funding is going away, then why on all the employees, not just, I mean, all the employees for Sand App totally on this list, the management included?
No, no. All the funding doesn't go away. Just the first five funding. And the first five, five funding is for case management, and there are a couple of other primary matters that need to be addressed through that as well. The managers or the supervisors don't participate in much of the case management.
Okay, so can I, maybe, this should go to Mr. Koba, and, and certainly to you. I think we keep asking you to think differently. What that means is, what is critical for this district? We know if this is a critical program for the district, and we may get the funding, but it may go away. If the funding goes away, is this something that the district needs? If it's something that the district needs, then my thought is that you would have looked at how we could sustain this. I mean, nothing against the manager. I know they say we keep cutting and cutting and cutting, but when a teen or a young person in our school needs support and they need counseling, you're going to tell me that we have managers sitting up in offices and no one to go and work with our children? I have a problem with that. That's, that's, but, 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 but the point is that what I expect executive staff to do is to look at that in its entirety and say, this is something that, that the district is critical, is critical to the district. You should tell us, not, not, not us telling, you should say, it is critical. If this program goes away, this is the consequences. Because board members might not understand what the consequences of this means. And, and I think that we need to know that. So, so we know that some of our grants are going to expire, but the question is that if we have a program that is going to expire, it is your responsibility and yours, Mr. Koba, to inform us, you know, how critical is that to the future of this district? And can we find funding someplace else for it? And we make that decision here, here, not, not out there somewhere? That's my concern right now. That's, that's why I said this needs to be, we need to look at things differently. We're just not doing it. We're doing the same thing, cut, 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 cut programs, and it's very frustrating for this board member.
There were a number of adjustments that had to be made last year when the governor cut the funding for this program.
I remember that. I was here.
There are currently efforts to secure additional funding through about five or six... There are currently efforts to secure additional funding through about five or six different sources. Relatively confident that that will come through.
I guess, but my point is, I'm glad you're working on that. I guess the point is that if those fundings do not come through, how critical is this program to the district? And is the board aware how critical it is? And so if the grant funding doesn't come through, does the board decide, we don't want to do this program? Or is the decision made for us someplace else? That's my point. Thank you.
Yeah, that's easy to say, but then the question is, what do you take away that's not essential?
I understand.
Okay, and I don't want to go there, but I'm addressing something more, I think, basic, which is if the funding is going away for case managers and it's prudent to lay off some of them, why not lay off all of them since they're funded by the same source money? See, I mean, my take on this, it doesn't matter to the funding whether you're bilingual or not. The funding says, we're going to fund case managers. And we have case managers. So then somebody made a decision somehow that we're going to fund, we're going to take the risk that will be refunded, but we'll only take the risk for Spanish-speaking folks and not for the rest of them. See, my take on this is if the funding for case managers is going away, it's all of them that's going away, right? Or where's the money for the others coming from?
There are 13 positions on this list for eliminations. Eight of those positions are bilingual.
Okay, where's the money come for those?
There are, the money, there's a combination or a mixture of funding sources for this program. Some is through first five and there's about six other, five to six other funding sources that sustain this program.
So then if we were going to say, okay, wait a minute. I don't think pregnancy is necessarily a racial issue. I think it could be either way, all right? So then the question is, the question is if you're going to reduce the workforce in a school district that has a broad range of ethnic balances and speaking abilities, then why wouldn't you say, I'm going to lay off some English-speaking and some Spanish-speaking? Why would you select only the English-speaking ones and not select any of the Spanish-speaking ones? It looks to me like that is a calculated way to get rid of folks and create a bilingual department which is racist.
Based on what happened, and again, I want to reiterate this, 13 caseworkers are on the list for eliminations. Eight of those caseworkers are deemed bilingual. They've been designated bilingual. Five are English-only, I guess is the designation if you want to look at it that way. I don't know how it's-
That's not what I was hearing, but okay.
Okay, well, that's the breakdown.
That's the data we need.
Okay, we, again, we've got a motion on the floor, which is to amend the original motion, to adopt the resolution, to notice filled positions on the list. And the amendment is to remove from that list the folks in the Sand App program.
For examination.
Okay, right. I would be very brief and I support the motion and I support removing a Sand App. There was just, I'm sitting here so long thinking about one point I need to make on this, which is we are, I'll let you go ahead. I just slipped my mind.
Is it gone?
It'll come back.
I've had moments like that. That's, yeah. No, I just wanted to clarify the motion and call the question. You know, that we're going to remove Sand App for examination, understanding that there's 45 days and that if the funding is gone. I'd like to point out that this board has railed frequently against the idea that once grant funding is gone, those programs have to be gone and people better be understand that. And I've heard that probably 10 to 20 times more often than I've heard. We have to examine any program that is cut. But Sand App is a particular program. I agree, it's a special one. Let's take a look at it. Let's examine it. We still have a 45-day window without, so there isn't any fiscal. But I call the question and ask that my colleagues devote.
Dr. Evans.
I just wanted to finish my thought, which was basically the issue of layoffs. Is that, the side note that came out of this, we were removing Sand App, some other problems were being brought up. But it's been the intention of this board very clearly over a period of time that we do not issue any layoff notices unnecessarily. So when we find out about a, and we're dealing now because of June 30th deadline. When we find out a program is September 30th, this is not the time to do it. There's plenty of time to investigate that, so that's why I support removing it.
Okay, very quickly, David.
Mr. Burrow, I just want to point out that I don't think Mr. Fulter or Ms. Hueso is being upfront. On your board document of the layoffs for the health service caseworkers, there's only eight on it. There is not 13.
Okay.
The association was not noticed.
Okay, thanks. So why don't we first vote on the amendment? Okay, now why don't we vote on the original motion? Ethel.
I thought I did, didn't I? Am I it? Sorry, I thought I pushed it.
Okay, all right, thank you. We will move on now to item FO3, the revised schedule of the Board of Education meeting.
Move approval.
I have a comment.
Got a comment.
I have, can we, I would like to do an amendment. I, June, July, is it July? July 20th Proposition S workshop. I think that it would be better if we get our Proposition S updates here during the meeting for five to 10 minutes versus having a workshop to tell us what's going on. I think that gives more transparency to the public. So I would just recommend that that not be a workshop at nine o'clock, at 9:00 AM, that that would be actually a 5:00 PM regular meeting or a special meeting.
So you're proposing, Ms. Jackson, that the July 20th meeting be held at 12:00?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Can we get a second?
I didn't understand whether you were combining with another meeting or you were just moving the time of day.
No, I'll just move it to 5:00 PM, that's fine.
I agree.
Okay, that's fine.
Motion in a second. Okay, so can we just vote on the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, on to item GO1.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a history of Prop S is what you're saying.
Right.
So AP weighted credit policy, we've got one speaker on this motion.
I move that we accept option four.
Wait a minute, where are we now?
Versus option two.
Are we on G?
GO1, this is the AP weighted.
This is in the first PDF.
We didn't vote on the whole agenda, the meeting schedule. Did we only vote on the amendment? Which was the one meeting?
No, he asked to make it full in as one.
Well, if we do it by consensus, fine, but I think the motion was to amend it by adding just a positive.
I move that we approve the schedule.
Amended schedule.
With the change.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, on to item GO1. Can we, we've got-
Could you clear that? I had already went on to the next item. Okay.
One more time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I pushed your own button, I'm sorry. Again, I'm sorry.
Say it again.
Thank you.
All right, so wait.
One more time, we're voting on the FO3, the revised schedule.
The meetings, yes.
Yes, the meetings. Okay, great. Okay, we've got one speaker on the next item on AP weighted credit policy, Katie Anderson.
And I made a motion that we adopt option four.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Let's see the numbers.
Option four, it says that the students want to pay for their grades to take the test and they can.
They can if they want to pay.
This would require the students to pay for the AP or IB exam to receive weighted grade. Those that qualify for free and reduced lunch would pay $5, other full price is 86 and it gives IB as well.
Is this in, which of the board docs is this, the whole thing?
I'm on page five right now.
No, but which? So it's attached?
It's GO1.
Yes, in the first PDF on the left, if you go in the board report.
It's on the left, all right. That's fine. I just want to know which of these it is. Because I didn't bring my papers. I bring, I use board documents. Okay, now I can look at option four. Okay, I'm not seconding it.
I'm not.
Is there a second to Ms. Jackson's motion? All right, Katie Anderson.
Good afternoon. I'm here in the capacity of Chair of the Gate DAC and Gate oversees AP as well as you know. And obviously, this is a really confusing issue, how to do this and have equality and not do anything illegal and not spend any money. And I just was thinking about the purpose of the district leadership, right? Why do we have district leadership? To ensure that we have parity across the district, right? So the purpose of the AP exam, I would think, is to ensure that we have parity across the country so that when our students are applying to colleges and they show that they've taken the AP exam, the colleges know what they're getting. So you have these various options and I really think that there's only one option that guarantees both parity across the district, making sure that everyone's learning the same thing and being tested on the same thing, as well as parity on a national level, which would be option three, which would be to require the exam and for the district to pay for it. Now, it seems to me that you guys already rejected that in your policy decision a couple of months ago. But I think that this comes down to some academic integrity here. I don't think that you can have your cake and eat it too. I don't think that you can say, we're not going to pay for it and everybody has to take it and pay for themselves because there are going to be people there, they're going to get left out and I know the district doesn't want to spend the money to take that legal battle on. Other districts are taking that on. So that's the option that's not, that's number four and it's going to cost you money to do that because people are going to complain about it. If you don't have the exam and you don't have the weighted grade, then why take the class for the student? And if you don't require the exam but you have a weighted grade, how do you make sure that everybody's giving the same test to allow for that weighted grade to have any weight? So, you know, all of these options, the only one I can see that really works is that you pay the money and you do what's right. Your stated goals for 2020 is that you have students who are prepared to go out there and that includes preparing those college-bound students. And colleges, college admissions departments are going to see this letter that says, well, the student took the AP class, but we're not testing because that's not important to us. We couldn't really afford it and, you know, but they took it. I don't think that's going to fly really well and I don't think that that goes toward our really valuing the whole AP program and what it's intended to do, which is prepare students, give them a leg up and help them in those admissions processes. So I would ask you to pay. The other thing I just wanted to suggest quickly, I know you guys just voted on this, but that OTBS thing. I pay a lot of attention. I had no idea they've had furloughs for six years. I can't believe that and nobody else, I don't think, knew that either. And for them to be now up on the block again, I'd like to know the management, who's taken pay cuts way up at the top? That might be something to look at.
I'd like to move that we approve option two.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion.
Okay, I want to discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I was actually going to move option three. I agree with the DAC and Gate, particularly right now. We have a lot of families in the district that not only are, you know, close to being on free and reduced lunch, but are trying to keep their homes and folks who have, you know, they're really facing an awful lot of challenges. There are students who may be college-bound, they can get scholarships, they can go ahead and put themselves through college any number of ways. But removing that AP exam, I was very well put by Ms. Anderson. I mean, I think they have the only equitable thing to do and to ensure that there's actually going to be effort. There is nothing quite like having that exam hanging over your head and knowing that you're going to be taking it in order to get you to really pay attention in class. So I was going to move option three, but I won't be supporting option two. I like, you know, the weighted grade, but I don't think that's honest. And I think that we have a moral obligation to try and find this. This is one way where the haves manage to separate themselves neatly from the have-nots. And, you know, as a student that was raised by a single-parent mom, I wouldn't have taken a class where I had to pay $85 or, you know, this amount of money would just be insurmountable. There's just no way that we could have ever, ever, ever have afforded this amount of money and I would have forgotten the experience. And I just don't think the class has as much meaning with no required exam and you still get a weighted grade. Again, Ms. Anderson, thank you very much for coming forward and I will talk to you about those six furlough days later.
Mr. DeBak.
Yeah, well, I honestly like to listen to the teachers that do this work and I got some communication from some. And it's interesting and also got some from administrators that have a strong interest in how their kids do the principles of schools. And it turns out, and there may be people that disagree with me, but it turns out that the colleges pay very little attention to weighted grades. Because, for example, some of our local private schools give a weight of as much as six times. So that they basically have learned that this is kind of like grade inflation and that the schools are basically just saying, well, let's try and play the game of 4.0. It used to be the average, but now if we just make our AP classes worth a lot more, our kids will come out with 4.5, 4.6 and they'll be able to compete. And the colleges throw up their hands and say, baloney. So what they do is they look at the AP class and they say, we value the fact that the kid took the AP class and got a grade, but we're not going to give it any special weight in admissions. And that's the practice. So therefore, the idea that we are going to just say, well, for us, we're going to say, attaboy, give you an extra thing. The question is, and I've always had this question, by the way, and some people will argue with me, but what's the difference between an AP class and let's say an honors class? Okay, well, apparently it's a weighted grade now, but maybe it ought to be that we just give grades and that we have teachers. And the teachers that wrote me said, why don't we just have all the teachers that are AP teachers come up with a common citywide grade standard and have a standard test? We don't have to pay $85 to have them prepare a final exam. And so I personally don't agree with any option but option one, which is no required program, no weighted grade, which is by the way, what a lot of our surrounding school districts do. And the individual student can take the exam and send it with their resume, what they want to, when they're applying for their credits. And the college would say, okay, this kid and their parents paid enough money for, take the test and here's the results, which is a published result. But why should we then, you know, I liked the idea before of paying for the test when we could afford it. We can't anymore.
Mr. DeBak, can I just speak to that test question?
Please don't interrupt me. Okay, I didn't interrupt for you. So then the issue is that for me, it seems like the most equitable way is to put the burden on the student. If they want to take the test, take it. But not for us to come up with a call, some kind of inflation of the grade that the teachers give. But it's also our responsibility to encourage the teachers to have a common testing platform. I don't think that's wrong. I really don't. So I can't vote for the other. I think option one is the only one I can support.
Dr. Evans.
Okay, go ahead, Vince, first.
Well, just to clarify that you get a weighted grade for an honors class also, so. But I would say that for the AP classes, regardless, you're enrolled in an AP class and throughout the year, every day you have the same amount of difficult homework to do. It's not like they dumb it down for the people taking the test and the people not taking the test. So it's just as hard if you don't take the test as if you do. It's just a day of a test and a day of not taking it.
But isn't it true that a person who's taking an honors class can take an AP test?
Yeah, they can.
And they can pass it too without even taking the AP course?
Right.
So therefore, if they want to take the test, they can and they could turn that record of passing the AP test in as an attaboy when they apply for the college. So that taking the AP course does not require in order to take the AP test. That true? That's why I understand it. Okay, so we have some cases in schools where kids have not taken the AP course at all, but have passed the AP test.
Dr. Evans.
Okay, are you done, Vince?
Richard, I've got one more point.
First of all, I would say I agree very much with Ms. Anderson about option three being the best option. I mean, in terms of all the students being able to take the exam and so forth. I don't have a problem with that. But I have problems on number three and number four for the following reasons though. Number four, first of all, it's not, there's really a legal problem and no one's really supporting it anyway. But, you know, in terms of requiring something that costs money- But, you know, in terms of requiring something that costs money, that there's a, there's a legal issue there. The, well, option three, it's the same issue that we faced on the last item, which is not something I like to do, but it's the fact of the matter that we laboriously went through reducing our budget, and we said, "These are the sacrifices we're going to make," and we already decided that. So to turn around and say, "Well, let's give the workers, you know, two more furlough days so that the students can take AP exams," just to be ridiculous, obviously, we wouldn't, we wouldn't consider that, so I, we really can't. That's why I've eliminated option four and option three. Now, the other issue is, there are a lot of ways that students can do this. I mean, one example is students take college courses in the high school, where Mesa College professors come to the high school and teach the courses. They get this college credit directly, because they are taking a college course. There are issues about a lot of money going from the district to a private corporation, as opposed to getting the money directly to the college, where they're getting the credit. I, I guess why I'm supporting option two or option one, as, as Mr. Dabatt has said, is that I think this is, at least at this point, at least a transition. I mean, if we're making the change from having the requirement of the exam, we can, I still believe we can have the weighted grade. I do believe that teachers can still make, teachers have the ability to make a rigorous course, whether or not the students are taking the exam. If the teacher's not doing that, that teacher should be held accountable for not having a rigorous exam. So that's why I support option two.
Yeah, I, I support option two as well. The same reasons that Dr. Evans just stated, and actually, what, what Vince just talked about is, I don't believe that not requiring students to take the AP test means that it's not going to be a rigorous course and that students aren't going to work hard. I think a weighted grade is, however, important, frankly, for admissions, more important than AP tests. And if we, if we talk about the UC system, a weighted grade, you know, can make the difference these days between whether you get into UCSD or not. And, and I think, and I think that's reality. I think the AP tests, I don't think have a lot to do with admissions, and different schools determine, you know, make different choices about whether they're going to accept AP tests, you know, for credit, and whether, you know, the, the score is going to have to be a five, or a four, or a three. So I think universities are all over the place in terms of accepting AP tests, you know, for, for, for college credit. But I think a weighted grade is important for admission, and so I think we need to preserve the ability to give weighted grades, and option two does so. Ms. Nakamura?
We had some really phenomenal numbers that I have been regretting I didn't, you know, write down. We have talked up here on the dais, out at, you know, other schools, we have the Achievement Gap Task Force within the county of San Diego. We've talked continuously about how to close the achievement gap, how to get students engaged. There have been phenomenal numbers that we've heard regarding African-American and Latino students who are, you know, attending these courses for the very first time, who are taking the examination because it's paid for. We saw an, you know, remarkable increase, and if there's somebody out, a staff member out in the audience that gave us those numbers, that can remember them, you know, I'd appreciate hearing from you. You know, it did phenomenal things for closing the achievement gap, for giving these kids the opportunity. The AP Science Bowl that we attended on Saturday, those kids were there to prepare for the exam. Okay? They got up at eight o'clock in the morning, seventy-some-odd students, to prepare for the examination. They were there. And, you know, they know that their exam is going to be paid for, and they're, they're serious about it. I think it has made a huge difference within this district when we started paying for this, doing the right thing, in my opinion, and paying for this exam. But, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're, we're going to say, "Okay, well, that's really nice." The student achievement, you know, even though it says, "All students will graduate with the skills, motivation, curiosity, and resilience to succeed in their choice of college and career," eh, not this year. So, I think that we absolutely made it with, you know, a difference. I think we sincerely made a difference when we started allowing for this, for kids at schools like Lincoln, for kids at schools like Morris, for kids at school like Hoover, you know, and with all due respect, Vince, I love you, but you go to La Jolla High, and, you know, there are a lot of kids there that can afford to pay for this exam, that, that we simply don't have that kind of access at so many of other high schools. And I really think it's somewhere, dig deep and find the money to pay for this. I think it, it is more important than ever to make sure that our kids are college-competitive with extracurricular activities, with competitions, because they're facing a world out there that is a lot tougher than it has ever been before. Getting out of this, this joint, getting out of this school district and being able to get a job is a lot more competitive and a lot, you know, more difficult than it used to be. And this is one way, one way that we can give our kids a leg up who don't have it. So, you know, I, clearly, I feel passionately about this, you know, and I, I may get voted down, but I appreciate the opportunity to at least say how I feel. And I think the only, the only right thing to do is option three.
Well, I would say, in response to that, is I think if, if you were to make a serious proposal for option three, you would come here and say, "This is a good option, and, and this is where I'm going to, I'm going to take this $600,000 from a specific program." And at the same time, we would approve, "Okay, we're going to pay for the AP exam, and we're going to take $600,000 away from something else." I mean, because that's, I mean, I, I have no argument with it, that's a great thing to do, and it's been very helpful, but I think we have to be realistic when we pass a budget to make a proposal. And you could say, you know, whatever it is, close a school, close a couple of schools, add on a furlough day.
I would, you know, I, I, actually, that's exactly, closing a couple of schools probably would pay for this.
Okay, so you have to come up with a reasonable proposal in terms of how it would be implemented, and can it be done? Because we're sitting here at this point in time.
Well, we know that we, there are a couple of schools out there that we could close that have small enrollments, and the average is about $300,000 to run those schools. Would you accept that proposal?
You haven't made a specific proposal.
So, I'd like to vote on this specific proposal. We've got a motion on the table for option two, please vote. Okay, that motion fails. Does somebody want to, we've had a, no second to a motion for option four. Keep going.
I propose option three.
Okay. Do we have a second for option, for that motion, for option three? No second? Okay. Does anybody want to?
Oh, no, option one.
All right, we've got a motion for option one. And option one is that we would eliminate...
That's, they, the, the teachers can make their own tests, but we, but basically, we're not requiring the test, and we're not getting weighted stuff. It's, it's on, it's, it's described in the exhibit, so I'm not going to reread it.
Do we have a, do we have a second for option one? We do not. Okay.
So what is the default position?
So there are, there are no options, so that's fine.
So Superintendent, what is the default position?
What are we doing now?
We don't have board support for any of the four options.
Continue paying for it, right?
We don't have board support. I would articulate that option two appears to be one where we're still offering rigorous AP courses.
Wait, 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 that's not, that's not the question.
No, well...
Well, hold on, you're advocating for a particular option.
Okay.
The, the question was, to be succinct, what are we doing right now? If we do nothing, if we take no action tonight, what are we doing right now?
We have a disconnect between the policy and the decision to remove the funding.
The funding's already been removed.
Funding's gone, so we're in option one.
And the reason why we brought this here is because you want to align the two, the policy and the financial decision.
I might observe, I think we're in option one by default.
I don't know that...
No, we're not.
I think we're in option two by default.
Option one by default, three by default.
If I could just speak to why option two was the staff recommendation. First of all, starting with Vince's comments about students not taking an AP course for an easy ride by any means. It comes with a, an approved syllabus that has to go through a rigorous screening. And so, by definition, we have lined up what the course requirements are, and they're extremely high. They're considered higher, in many cases, than the honors course. And so, that, I wanted to confirm Vince's observation. Secondly, in the analysis that we did across the county, we looked at and saw that we are the only district in the county that does not provide a weighted grade for an AP course. And so, in the interest of being competitive in things that are county-wide competitions, such as athletic scholars and other county-wide competitions that look at students' GPA, we look, we can, we wanted to make sure that we were competitive with other students in Grossmont, Poway, and Sweetwater. Thirdly, we did, did reach out, and still need to reach out, to AP teachers on this subject. AP teachers throughout the course, they, they have midterms, they constantly are using released items on AP tests to test students along the way, and their grade is aligned to those released-item tests. They're constantly writing the, the DBQs, the database questions, the essays, they're scoring those in a similar fashion to the AP test, all along the way. And then, and then lastly, Mr. Dabatt is correct, that colleges don't necessarily look at the AP weight, but they do look at the most difficult course. So if you have a calculus course and it's not AP, and that is your most difficult course at, at La Jolla High, I think they have AP calculus, but let's just say, then that would be the course that they are looking at, and if you did not take the most rigorous course, you're scored appropriately down on that. So if we have AP courses and we are not, we are not recognizing, you know, we're not looking at the difference between honors, it could, it could impact that if we're offering those and we're not giving the weighted grade along with that. So, those are just some of the reasons that we recommended option two.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that option two is essentially option four, because I can tell you that a parent is going to make sure their kid takes, who's paying attention, is going to make sure their kid takes that, that examination. Okay? And the teachers are undoubtedly still going to be talking about, you know, the examination. This is not that we're going to happen to number two and they're not allowed to take the exam. It's still going to be the privileged students are still going to be taking this examination, while students who are not so privileged are going to be sitting in this classroom without any options whatsoever. You know, I would like to know, Ms. Meyer, what changes did we see when we started offering AP with, and paying for that examination? Do you have those statistics regarding what we saw, the increase in participation that we saw among African-American and Latino students?
Yes, and I agree with you.
Shot through the roof.
The, we had a 3% increase in participation in our African-American students.
How many kids is that?
Let's see, 12% of forty, of 35,000.
Who's 3% more?
Yes, 3% more.
Only 10,000 in the senior class.
Right, so, but it is a course that, you know, we do see AP 9 to 12.
It's a substantial number of individuals. Well, it may be 3%, it's a substantial number of individuals, is it not?
Yes, yes, it is. And we also saw an increase in 2% in the Hispanic students who took it, who, when we, when we offered the course.
Which is a much larger number.
Which is a much larger number. Approximately 15,000 students, we saw a 2% increase. I can speak to the AP incentive efforts that have been going on over the last five years. In all of our Title I high schools over the last five years, we have a person at each of the campuses who is counseling, who is a counselor, who's encouraging students to, to go into AP courses, who is working with the staff to place students in AP courses. So that has been part of the effort. We've also asked principals and teachers to recommend and to look for students who have potential to be in AP courses. So it is a multifaceted effort in addition to the last two years of paying for the test.
I just want to clarify the difference that I understand between option two and option four, is that in option four, in order to receive a weighted grade, the student would have to take the test.
Correct.
And in option two, you would not.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Right, but I guarantee your parents are still going to make sure that their, you know, who are paying attention, that their darlings are going to get, you know, this examination is going to get taken.
Okay, so we can try to move this forward. I will move that we do option two. Does that vote any negative before I can begin?
So why don't we vote on that again?
I need a second.
A second. All right. Let's vote again on option two. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, item GO2, Authorization to Develop and Submit to the U.S. Department of Education Magnet School Assistance Program Grant Application.
Move approval.
Got a motion, do we have a second? I will second the motion.
Discussion.
And let's have discussion, GO2, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Jackson?
The concern, I, I don't mind us submitting for this grant. The concern that I have is that we are not developing cohesive groups throughout the district, and I am turning to page 19. And on page 19 is a chart there. This list is different from what was presented to us originally, but...
Is that, is that attachment three?
This is, I don't know, it's page 19.
Okay, well, I've got...
It's page 19, the San Diego Plan for Racial Integration.
Okay, so, so, and I think we need to, it's motion is just a motion to submit the grant. This is not a motion to approve this plan, because it's embedded inside the plan, I think the plan needs more work. But on page 19, where we have the STEM engineering, the science, technology, engineering, mathematics, they did not include Lincoln at the bottom, which is a, and it has a science and engineering school in it. So I am not understanding why it was not included as part of the feeder pattern for the people at Johnson-Webster and Millennial Tech that are in STEM programs.
Well, okay, so may I?
Yeah, Ms. Dabatt.
Okay, well, I'll call it, I, I looked at this, this part, this plan that, which Sheila was looking at, this Plan for Racial Integration is basically obsolete. It's, it's basically got information that was probably in place at the beginning of 2009, and it has not really been brought up to date. Now, I understand we're short-staffed, but I got, if you go to page two, they say the changes, and then you look at the changes on page two, it says, "Summary revisions to the San Diego Plan for Integrational Integration," and it says, "Cluster one, 23%, cluster two, 32%," and lists the schools afterwards. But it doesn't say anything about what those percentages are or what they're used for in determining the placement, although I sort of understood it. Doesn't mean anybody else reading it would. Okay? So then, I've got other notes, I went through this page by page, but on page 15, I mean, these are, these are pretty obsolete, but, you know, I don't like to miss some stuff as a backup for our applications when they're... It says, "Program organization," page 15, "Magnet programs serve an entire school. All elementary and secondary school programs operate as total school magnets. Only Mission Bay High School has developed a small international baccalaureate program," so that's not within, that's not a, you know... But then you go back and you also look at IB for San Diego High, and it's not a, it's only a school in the complex, but it's not the total school program, which IB, by the way, requires. So, so then, I, you know, it's just not, not clear. So then you go to page 21, I got more notes, you know, they're just more editing than anything. "Program continuity. The students enrolled in achievement through communication magnets have the option and are given priority to continue in the redheaded magnet program at the Roosevelt, IB, a middle C-years program for grade six," but there's other places. So all, you know, I, I mean, I could pick it, I don't know, I, I don't want to go through it, I really don't. What I'm saying is that if I'm going to send off an application for magnet grants, then let's not include backup stuff that is not current information. And then, you know, maybe we'll say we have a new San Diego Plan for Racial Integration that needs to be approved. By the way, this board hasn't approved this plan. This was a previous board that might have approved it. So if you guys are interested in looking at the plan, maybe audit, and then maybe we had to have a current plan to submit, or we should just plan, say, "This is a under-revision plan."
Ms. Meyer, yeah?
I, I just wanted to agree that the point is, is taken, and that we need to go back and look at this. This was the 2009, 2010 plan, as Mr. Dabatt has described. And just for clarification as well, Lincoln was not on the particular chart, because it is not a magnet, but it is most definitely a STEM school.
When we submit the grant application, are we attaching this plan to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's a problem for me, because it leaves you with this commitment that this is our point. I don't think it is.
Yeah, it is a problem for me, too.
With your permission, we would like to go back and take this plan to make sure that it is something that, that is up to par to submit, and we can certainly bring it back, or...
Yeah, so it seems like what we'll need to do...
Carolyn, I think maybe you want to...
Right.
Carolyn, I think maybe you want to address this.
There's a timeline problem, when you say this is the form, the most recent plan, and it's under revision, then I don't have a problem. I mean, that's the easiest way to go about it. The feds aren't going to, really honestly, going to read it anyway, to tell you the truth. They just go ahead and just do what they do. But my point is, the plan should not be submitted as our plan unless it's been vetted by this board.
Can we, can we, in our application, say that we're revising the...
Yes, we certainly can.
Let's do it.
All right, okay.
Okay, I have some questions about this. What my interest in this was that, when we spoke before, was that these magnet grants were a chance to enhance some current programs. I mean, for example, taking Mission Bay High School as an example, which is a largely non-resident transported school. There were one or two cases the last time when you mentioned, well, they might draw students from this school or that school, and I don't know if that was Adams or another one, when there was the idea of how to bring other people in. I don't support, myself, I don't support adding more magnets that are going to add to our transportation costs. But if we have something like Mission Bay and maybe Mann or something like that, where we're taking an existing situation and enhancing it, that's fine. But I, I don't see, for example, on the transportation, it doesn't list all of the schools, but I would say, you know, other than a peripheral minimal transportation cost, I would not want to add any more on. And so, I guess my question would be, there are one, two, three, four, five, six schools in this proposal, right?
Yes, sir.
Which ones of those would, would most likely not have any significant additional transportation?
That's a good question.
Well, three of the schools...
I would say Mission Bay is in that category, because they're already full with transported students, so it's not to fill them.
And so is Roosevelt, and so is Lindbergh-Schweitzer.
Okay, so those three fit that category. So then, the other ones that don't fit the, and then, so the other ones are...
Are new schools.
Mann, Mann, how would that...
And Mann, right now, has, does not have transportation going to that school. And when we're looking at the total cost of the transportation, we're looking at, like, four years out with a successful magnet program, with academic success, with no program improvement, because that's how you attract children.
Okay, so, but what you're basically doing with Mann, then, is, in the traditional magnet model, which is to draw in students from other schools.
And who goes away?
Well, we...
So, and the same thing with Adams or Washington, I guess the idea is that you would increase the citywide participation in those schools, and so that we're adding an increased transportation budget.
Oh.
And we're also taking students away from our neighborhood schools.
Well, and there's lots of ways to look at this. One is that, yes, and hopefully, community students or students in the area who now will leave the area may come back.
Right.
So that would actually be less transportation to another part of town. And then we're also, when we target, we target students from out of district, new to the district students, students who are attending private schools. We target specific groups.
I understand that certain schools may need to be enhanced. I'm just, other than, but I'm not sure that they necessarily have to be enhanced in a magnet program. Whereas, to me, the ones that you mentioned, as far as Mission Bay and Roosevelt, this is just getting some funding for what, to enhance what we're already doing.
We've got Ms. Nakamura, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. DeBeck.
The Plan for Mission Bay and Pacific Beach was previously presented with the concept of drawing students from the Serra cluster, and, you know, where those students are, what I love about that plan is that we have Hoover students going to the Serra cluster, but we have resident students from Serra going over to the Pacific Beach cluster. Have you considered making Serra High School an IB program, so that kids don't have to, you know, traipse all the way across the district? Is that still part of the plan with regard to Mission Beach and, or Mission Bay, excuse me, and Pacific Beach?
I believe G03, the next item, is about Pacific Beach becoming a magnet, changing its status from a V school to a magnet.
But the idea is that they would draw from Serra?
Well, actually, the idea is that, and we're moving to G3, but...
No, we're still talking magnet and the concept of transportation, so...
It's a concept. What you're looking at with PB, right now, it has five feeder schools, that actually the V program moves from and to PB. What happens is if you live outside those five school areas, but you could actually get to one of those bus stops, we still would say, no, I'm sorry, you're not going to a V school, we can't transport you there. By making it a magnet school, then all of a sudden, that 15 ridership that they need to meet, if that student can get to an area that we have, you know, with magnet, we have express stops, where they have five stops right now, most likely that'll turn into one or two stops, because they're in two different areas. So express routing in magnet has actually saved some money, and it actually brings more kids to a central location to then go to another school through the express routing. Does that help a little?
But then, you're still opening, and I'm just clarifying that, and for example, then there'd be a few students in Miramesa that want to come, and so now we're providing transportation from Miramesa to Mission Bay. And so this is the whole crisscrossing the districts.
And it's because of school choice. I mean, because they're looking for that specific program blocking.
But initially, and I didn't second this, because I don't, I don't support this, because I asked, how many magnet schools do we have right now? And what happens is that, yes, we're applying for a grant, but the current schools that were in the grant previously came out of the grant, and we're still paying for them to be magnet, all right? And so my concern, when this was brought up, was that we have schools that we're currently getting magnet funding for.
Right.
That money will go away, and we have to absorb that money into our general budget, and you're going out getting more magnet money that is in the form of grants that will, again, impact our budget later on. And, and I think, from this board member's perspective, that was not what I thought we really wanted to do. I thought we wanted to build up our neighborhood schools. Now, we understand that we need, we want money, but if that money is going to cost us more over the long run, because, again, each of these magnet schools, and I don't know the total amount of your budget right now, but I think the board needs to have that piece of pie in front of them, too. And that, that is that, I know Millennial Tech is a magnet now, and that the grant funding for Millennial Tech ends either this year or next year.
This year.
This year. And so then you're coming back to the board and say, okay, it's a magnet, we still need to fund Millennial Tech, okay? Even though the grant funding is gone. And, and I guess my, my concern is that we don't need to keep adding more money onto our plate, because when the grant funding goes away, we still try to maintain those magnets. I think we should look at what we have currently, and how do we strengthen those programs in that school? Because I do have a concern that we will add another, you know, was it 3 million a year that we spend as each group comes in, about 3 million or so?
Right.
So that means we're adding another $3 million.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Right, well, not right, not initially, but, but the money's that, okay, the 3 million that we would have get from Millennial Tech in that last group, they ended this year.
Yes.
That 3 million would have to be added to our general budget.
Well, actually, that's startup money, so when you look at all of the bells and whistles and what attracts...
Okay.
And makes the success of Millennial Tech right now.
Okay.
That paid for that, that infrastructure. Now, what, and now you have to remember, this was 2006 that we applied. And at that time, we set up the schools so that we would then support some FTEs at that school site. So that is in place. Now, with this grant in the sustainability section, it literally, we have written that all sustainability within the grant has to come from within the school structure when it's finished, at the end of the three years, which is a little different than what we did in the last grant cycle, where we actually said, well, we will continue to support the FTE for the magnet resource teacher, or whatever it was. You know, a specialist teacher, because you know, at our magnet schools, in many cases, we do have that lab teacher, or someone special that makes that program special.
But, but I guess, and my, my time, I think, is up here, like, must be off, my time is up. But I guess my, my concern, and I guess maybe I'm not saying it the right way, is that even though we got the startup money, we still, as a district, have to maintain the magnet, and that is an additional cost to the district. And the concern is that we go out and get more startup money, that is going to add to our bottom line in a time when we don't have any more money, we don't make any, we don't have any more money to sustain, to sustain these. And I'm just concerned that we're taking on more than we should be taking on, rather than sustaining what we already have.
If you would like, we certainly can go ahead, and you can make a motion where we only are looking at sustaining the three programs. All three of those schools were all evaluated that would be sustaining.
Three.
Which is Mission Bay, Roosevelt, and Lindbergh-Schweitzer. And those three schools would be revised, and they do need the revisions that are being, that we need to go forward with. And then, the three new schools, we could take out of the grant. I can't add new and different schools, because we've been working too long, but we certainly can take schools out if that's what you're interested in doing.
Okay, so just to clarify on that, with the Mission Bay, because I agree completely with Ms. Jackson, that we don't, we want to clean up what we already have and make it better, and we don't want to take on, continuing adding on, particularly to the transportation and other components. It seems like with Roosevelt and Mission Bay, that these are programs ongoing, the magnet funding could enhance the program somewhat, and we're going to continue on with them even after the magnet program's gone, so it's just like an extra shot in the arm, but it's not starting something up. Just to clarify, on the Lindbergh-Schweitzer, I'm not sure, they have a magnet now, and they're just changing the focus of their magnet?
It would be completely revised, refocused, it was brought out by the Magnet Schools of America, but the reason that they literally stood out for us, and the reason I put them in here, was one, they are not in PI, they're not in program improvement, so they are a great program improvement, school choice option. As a matter of fact, all magnets, just like all schools, if they're not in program improvement, become that program improvement, school choice option. So with that, and we already had lots of transportation going there, because I had already come forward, talking about these schools, and I didn't want to give you a new surprise of transportation money. So it also has this wide range of transportation from all over the district, because of its special ed and the magnet program that it does have.
And what is the reason that they have to change their magnet focus?
Because, because you're looking for revision. How are we going to convince markets and attract students from all over the area that are in program improvement?
Okay, so then we're bringing in more students, and we're increasing the trans, okay. I would make a motion that we submit the application for Mission Bay and Roosevelt.
Yes, sir, you're making an amendment.
If I don't have Lindbergh-Schweitzer, I'm missing priority points.
Oh, is the motion already made to approve all of them?
Don't have Lindbergh-Schweitzer.
Okay, I amend it that we limit it to Roosevelt and Mission Bay.
You said if you don't have Lindbergh-Schweitzer, you what?
Without Lindbergh-Schweitzer, we will lose our priority points for offering school choice option for a school that is, for students who attend schools that are in program improvement. It is the only school that we are taking forward that is not in program improvement at this time. Our idea is that we transform schools, we, you know, we make a difference at those school sites. But we have to have one that actually is offering that school choice option now, and that would be our Lindbergh-Schweitzer.
If you have a second to Dr. Evans' motion?
Yes.
Okay. Then Ms. DeBeck and Superintendent Cogan.
Okay, well, I don't think, I really didn't, didn't think we were ready to do a motion, but, you know, my question is this, too, what should happen at a school that becomes a magnet? Are we using the magnet idea as a way to improve a school?
Yes, sir.
Or are we using it to attract students to a school? Okay, the word magnet implies that it has a function, and that the reason why the feds are giving us the money is that we are going to be able, not to transform a school, but to build an interest in a school for a purpose. And the original purpose around this was to get ethnic balance.
Yes.
Or to get, you know, some kind of parity in, in the society of the school. So now, then, you got Mann, okay? Then I ask the question, what's the capacity of Mann to attract, at last I knew, Mann was full.
The way I understand it from facilities is that we can bring in about 400 more students at the school.
At Mann?
At Mann.
We were talking about charter, taking...
Okay, it has capacity, okay, well then, fine. Then the next question is Adams, has that got the capacity?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, see, the capacity's not even in the report, so I have to ask these questions, okay? And then Washington, downtown...
Yes, has a neighborhood population attending the school of less than 150 students.
Yeah, but it's how many kids actually go there.
It has capacity for, I don't have those numbers right here in front of me, so I'm going to say, but...
At last I knew, they were, a lot of downtown parents were bringing their kids there, and the school had grown from, and that's why we enlarged the school, by the way, because it was at capacity.
Well, no, it's, it has room for about 2, 150 more children beyond what's attended.
So then the answer about all these three schools is, they have room.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then the next question is, when you replicate stuff that we're already using in the district, and IB is an example, or all that, then how does it become a magnet? When you've got places where kids are going already, and you might just be dissolving the effect of the other magnets, how do you know that it is the, except for the fact that it's a, I'll call it sexy program that everybody's looking, looking at and they want in their neighborhood, that doesn't make it a magnet? You know what I mean? So, so, you know, I, I look at, I look at this and I say, I think what we're trying to do is take care of program improvement. I don't think we're really trying to create magnets or integrate kids. I think we're trying to do program improvement with magnet money, and that's the way it works. And I don't, I personally don't agree with that. I want, I want to see us, and I know Sheila and I don't agree, I think the neighborhood school's okay, but not if it's segregated, okay? And I believe the magnet school money was designed to fight that.
Yes, sir.
And so that's my issue.
Ms. Jackson and Superintendent.
I don't know if I can vote for this.
Well, I know about having segregated schools, what I said is that each community school should be a good quality school, and you shouldn't put programs in other schools that pull kids away from the community to integrate certain, to integrate certain schools. I think that, my concern, again, with this, is that we don't, I don't want us adding additional financial burdens to the district. And when we go out, and, and so, I need to know, and maybe it's here, I just didn't see it, how much is our magnet budget now, that we're going to have to take from the general fund, to fund the current magnets that we have? Because that will increase once we get these other items, these other magnets that you're going after. And again, the board needs to know how much money it's going to cost to sustain these programs. And I think that, again, staff is coming and saying, this is great, this is great, or we shouldn't do something, but the decision is up here, and if we don't have all the information, it makes it very difficult. And I think that the magnets should be able to sustain themselves, but also here, that we're tired of busing kids across the district. We want to make every school a good school. Every school a good school. And if a school has a program that's a great program, we don't need to replicate it, we need to just focus on making our schools good, with the finances that we have.
Superintendent.
I'd like to propose to the board, for the reasons that I've heard articulated, that you consider sustaining the three magnets we have. I don't think it's, at this point in time, we want to do a couple of things. We do not want to draw kids inappropriately from neighborhood schools.
Roosevelt, Roosevelt, and Mission Bay.
Yes, they all have magnets. Magnet School of America report did recommend a variety of options, including either refreshing or re-energizing schools, or eliminating programs where they didn't meet the criteria of Magnet School of America, which included diversity, specific drawing curriculum themes that were rigorous and demanding of kids. And I would say, you know, Monday Morning Quarterbacking, if we had thought about this a little while ago, we can't afford to incur cost, we can't afford to draw kids inappropriately from other schools, but we could afford to sustain these schools that are already existing magnets with transportation patterns and make them better than what they are today. At the same time, I know Carolyn's done a lot of good work here, at the end of the year, she'll be giving you an evaluation of the magnets as we know them today, where they are. But maybe sustainment is what it's all about right now in these difficult times.
I agree.
I do agree that, you know, with the concept of sustainment, but I just feel that I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Adams. Adams is a school that has been struggling and that I think has been up for closure, and it is one that, you know, I think could really be strengthened and helped with this particular program without necessarily increasing in budget... particular program without necessarily increasing in budget and busing. I think that putting the magnet school program there would actually draw local community back into, into Adams. It's almost exclusively right now, transportation. And I think that if we had this program here where it's a leadership academy based on Shawn McCovney's Habits of Effectiveness, that it would, you know, potentially actually increase community participation in this particular school. Right now, the school is almost exclusively all bussed in, and I think we would reduce busing significantly if we, if we added this one in.
So we've got a motion on the floor, which is simply to approve the application for Roosevelt and Mission Bay. We've got a suggestion of the.
Amendment.
Amendment, I'm sorry.
A motion to amend it.
A motion to amend.
Which we haven't voted on.
We've got a suggestion from the superintendent to include Lindbergh-Schweitzer, and we've got a suggestion from Ms. Nakamura to include Adams. So I guess the question is, Dr. Evans, do you want to change your amendment in any way? If not, we'll vote on it.
Well, my, I guess that where I'm not quite as sure is on the Lindbergh-Schweitzer issue. You know, I mean, there was a recommendation from a magnet school panel that this be changed. Does it need to be a magnet?
Yes, sir.
It needs to be a magnet?
Well, right now, it is a magnet school.
And it needs to continue being a magnet because?
Oh, well, I would, I would say that because it does have a very small resident population going to the school. It has quite a few magnet students who are choosing to go to that school now for a theme that is very weak. When you asked me about the themes and those types of things, this is one that does need to be revised.
Okay, so their theme is weak, but again, with Mr. DeBeck's definition of magnet, drawing people there, they're still being drawn there. They're being drawn there with what's supposedly a weak theme.
Yes, and, and part of the, and part of the theme that is there right now is the fact that it does have a large special education population, so a lot of the students who are attending are siblings of students, of special education students. It's, it's a very special school, I really love it as a school site, and so for it to bring on the theme that they're looking at is, is amazing. It would be just a, it's just one that I think is a smart one to support through this funding that we can get from the federal government to have the PD and things that's necessary to make the changes. Without that money, we really can't have the professional development that we need for the teachers to make that happen.
I'd like to make one more pitch regarding Adams, and that is that I think that this, unlike the IB program, which actually requires extra money to sustain it, this leadership, I think, is sustainable once this, this particular model is completely sustainable once the magnet school money goes away.
Yes.
I seconded the motion with Dr. Evans, and I stand by my second. I would not add Lindbergh, I pulled Lindbergh sheet. It has 167 resident, 246 non-resident, it is a writing and multimedia magnet as it is, and, and so I just really feel that we need to focus on what we have and make what we have better. I cannot support bringing anymore in, that means man, that means Adams. I just, I just think that we need to go after money that can strengthen the ones that we have, which is why I second his motion, and then work on the ones that we currently have. I just can't see as refreshing, because a lot of the ones in here are in the same position that Lindbergh is. And I didn't give, the, the report that we got, I felt was kind of slanted. You know, I read the report, and I remember, I remember under the auspices which it was initiated, so, so I stand by the, the ruling to go for the magnet money that will strengthen the two that we have that are, need to be, you know, strengthened.
Okay, why don't we vote on the amendment then, which is to simply support Roosevelt and Mission Bay? Okay, that passes four to one.
Wait a minute.
Now we'll vote on the.
The amended motion.
On the amended motion, which is to submit the, authorize the submission of the application only for Roosevelt and Mission.
Yeah, well, the application was authorized just now.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Okay, then I missed, okay, I misunderstood the vote, because I thought there's an opportunity to consider the others, so we're going to do Mission, my understanding of it was that it was Mission Bay and Roosevelt, we'll do those, and then that we get an opportunity to vote on the others.
Well, the original motion was to approve all of them, and I amended to say approve only these two.
To zero the.
I mean, I proposed an amendment, and that amendment passed, so we still need to vote on, on whether we approve the motion, which is now.
Do we want to just, for clarity, re-vote on the, on the amendment, which was to support only Roosevelt and Mission Bay in this application?
Please, please.
Okay, won't make much of a difference, but I'm with you.
So now, the, the motion is, the original motion, simply to authorize submission of the application that will only.
Right.
Okay, please vote. Okay, let's move on then. We've got item GO3.
Currently, GO3, Pacific Beach Middle School is the only secondary middle school that offers IB that is not a magnet, and the request before the board is to change them from a choice status to a magnet status, fulfilling the K-12 pattern.
We have a motion in favor, Ms.
Go move. That, that means that they get transportation, or no?
Yes.
All right, and transportation would be, is there a budget that shows the amount?
$237,000.
Yes, there is, there is a projection.
To $431,000.
Correct. The projection is that it would be the changing of, considering the transportation stays the way it is now without any other adjustments, it would be a change of 180,000 that would, would grow if the magnet grew to nine buses, to conceivably up to 431.
This troubles me because we have so, we have buses going to Crown Point, we have other buses going to Mission Bay, and it's.
The projection was created in the context of everything else remains the same, which is doubtful if we made this change.
Yeah, I think this is probably overstating the cost of transportation, but I still made my motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion to accept this proposal, do we have a second? Nope? Okay. Proposal dust.
But it's still a VIB.
It's still IB program.
Yeah, it's a VIB, no transportation.
On to item HO1, adopting the lease agreement with the city of San Diego for.
So move.
The central downtown library, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, we have speakers, I'm sorry.
To the voting block, Richard, when the speakers are over.
Okay, let's just do the speakers first.
You can put a vote.
Can I clear the thing?
Could we clear the, yeah.
I know, it's just really hard to guess.
Just in case they have.
Okay, can we call Judith Harris, Laura Andrews, Deborah Barrow, Matthew Goldberg, Carleen Hemrick, and Katie Sullivan?
Tell us about.
My name's Judith Harris, I chair the San Diego Public Library Foundation. We raise private funds to help support the library system throughout San Diego. I'm here tonight to encourage you to vote forward, a yes vote on the lease with the city for a school in the new central library. When I began my involvement with the San Diego Public Library Foundation six years ago, this was not a project I anticipated, but it has evolved into an innovative partnership that I feel proud to support, and I find myself very interested in what cultivates success in education. This unique collaboration of the school district and the library will create opportunities for the urban high school student when opportunities are drying up. The many donors and supporters that I speak with on a daily basis are very, very energized by this collaboration and the ability to design something new in literacy and education. We're trying to be part of a solution. How do we keep students engaged in learning? We foresee an environment where resources will be available to these students in a groundbreaking way. There's not only a need for a downtown high school where approximately 2,800 students are transported to other schools, but there exists a need to maximize the benefits our children can derive from their final years in high school. Within this project, we see a student body that can develop and succeed with the help of mentorships, internships, practical experience, and immediate access to a modern library system of technology, research, and educational resources. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Good evening, my name is Laura Andrews, and I'm here in support of the school barry, as they call it. I am a proud parent of three young men, and I've been, through their journey, I've learned a lot. I've been very involved as a parent, starting the first PTA at Kimbrel Elementary, successfully being also a PTA president in their middle school years, and now that they're in their high school years, I've been trying to be very proactive in their schools as well. However, it's been challenging. I'm one of the parents who, families whose kids would normally be bussed out all over town due to the fact that I live, you know, so close to downtown where we're limited as far as high schools. My kids are zoned to attend San Diego High, however, because after my oldest son's experience in the first semester, the over occupancy caused a lot of challenges. They weren't able to meet his academic needs, along with, you know, supplies, everything, all the tools you kind of need in order to be successful. So we opted out to homeschool our oldest son. And then the other two, we opted out to play some what was best for them. Right now, my middle child gets bused to Crawford, actually, I take him myself, but he goes all the way clear across town due to the lack of schools in our area. My youngest one goes all the way to Provo and Mahoya, which takes him about, about an hour on a good day to get to the school. So that means that he gets home on a good day at 5:00, but if he needs homework assistance, he gets home at about 8:00, 7:30, 8:00, and then he's there almost, you know, 10 hours. So as you probably know, there is a need for a school in the downtown area, and what better place than to put him in an awesome school, in a library, and to be surrounded by all this knowledge and new technology? So I look forward to the opportunity of maybe having the opportunity of placing my youngest son in that school once it gets built. Thank you for your support.
Good evening, Board President Barera and school board members. My name is Deborah Barrow, library director for the city of San Diego's library system. I'd like to give you a glimpse of how the lease you are considering in this amazing library, a jewel for San Diego, will benefit students from a student's point of view. Everyone's talking about your new cool school located in the downtown library, with its grand reading room, technology everywhere, the People's penthouse with the view terraces, sculpture garden, art gallery, and more than 1 million books. You arrive at school quickly, you live in the area, your friends took the trolley today. The lobby and garden court are amazing. Your friend says, "Did you see how beautiful the building looked on the way over here? That dome looks like the one at Balboa Park, and Petco Park is nearby. Let's go over to the coffee cart in front of the library to get a snack." For assembly today, you gather in the library's auditorium. As you walk up to receive your award, your picture is on the enormous screen for all to see, and don't you look great? That special someone is going to know who you are for sure now. Classes are exciting, teachers are excited to teach at this new, energy-efficient school and to be in the library setting. The school has its own entrance and its own floors, so parents don't have to worry. It's safe. School ends, so you walk around to the library entrance. This is a fantastic, wondrous community space of information, knowledge, and learning. The library is the best gathering place in town. With 400 computers, group study rooms, and technology center, it's a breeze getting homework done. You've got your virtual locker covered, thanks to the library. And if you need help, there's trained staff in the homework center and librarians to get you online to the homework help network. The social studies paper due in two weeks, well, you can look online and use a service called School Rooms to find information about Afghanistan. The information is exactly suited to your grade level. Lucky thing, the library subscribes to so many resources for students. Homework is done, so you go over to the teen center in the library to find the latest Vampire Diary series, or maybe to download a video to your iPad. This new library has the fastest Wi-Fi network in town, and it's free. The electronic information bulletin board says if you read 10 books for the reading program, you'll get two tickets to the Padres game. And Dad says he's coming to the library for the literacy program to work on his reading skills in English. You are so happy to be going to this school. Information and knowledge are all around you. All of this and more in the new library, and I thank you for your consideration.
My name is Carleen Hemrick. I retired after teaching 37 years at Pershing Middle School, and during my teaching career, I used the San Carlos library, my students used the San Carlos library, who would put books on reserve for us for special projects. I now volunteer with the Friends of the Library, and I'm particularly interested in collaboration with the schools in the work that I do there. We have a homework hotline, we have a summer reading program, we sponsor an essay contest for grades four, eight, and 10, which is aligned with California literacy standards and with the One Book One San Diego program. We have, in years past, had a children's book festival, which we could not afford to continue with our budget cutbacks. So instead, this year, on May 14, we are sponsoring Pam Munoz Ryan, a nationally known author, to come to the new Logan Heights library, and we will bring students who can walk over from Memorial Academy and from Logan Elementary School to hear her, and we have gotten Scholastic to donate a book for every student who attends, one of her books, we invite you to come too. I always felt as a teacher that my purpose was to teach students to become lifelong learners, and what better place could you do that than in a library?
Hi, my name is Matthew, and I'm a sixth grader at Pershing Middle School. I heard about the new high school they are going to build at the library downtown, and I thought, what a cool place that would be to go to school. I like the library we have at Pershing, but can you imagine the kind of library that school will have? More than 1 million items and more than 80,000 for kids and teens. That will be the best school library perhaps in the world, and the students there will be able to do some really amazing research, papers, and essays. In addition to their teachers, the students will be able to ask all those librarians for help and advice. Students will have no excuses for not getting all As. The location is awesome, close to Balboa Park and museums, close to the bay, close to City Hall. There will be some awesome field trips, maybe we can walk the block over to Petco Park on opening day. I hope you will build a new school at the new library by the time I reach high school.
Thanks, Matthew.
Katie Sullivan, and I'm from the Scripps Ranch community, but I also serve as the commissioner on the library board of commissioners, I am the chair. I've personally worked for this new central library for our city for 15 years. It's hopefully going to be a dream come true, but I've got to tell you, when the idea for placing a charter high school in the library came to the fore, a renewed enthusiasm and excitement came, came to everyone. It is just such a wonderful idea. There is, there is one amendment to the lease agreement that was recently added, which asks for a placement of someone representing the interests of the school district be placed on the library commission. commission. And as the library commission chair, I thought I would speak to you, although I must say, our commission has not had a chance yet to meet on the issue, so I am speaking personally rather than on behalf of the full commission. I am supportive of this proposal in the lease agreement, partly because over my six years on the commission, I have seen so many ways in which the school district and the library interconnect. It's not just the central library that causes me to want to have somebody from this constituency on the commission. Just this fall, as Carleen mentioned, we opened up a new library in Logan Heights. It is physically on the property of the library, and so we are sharing that facility. Any day of the week you go into that facility, you will see hundreds of children using the computers, getting materials. It is a really good liaison. The computers at all of our libraries are available for the free use of children to complete their assignments and have the benefit of a trained librarian to help guide their efforts. The San Diego Public Library has purchased a contract to provide live homework help tutors to all San Diego children via the Internet, with credentialed teachers tutoring them in all subject matters K through 12. And every single one of our 35 branch librarians and all of our children's librarians and all the librarians at the central library work with teachers and principals at all of your schools to make sure that we provide the curriculum, support, and enhancement on a daily basis. Our free cultural programs are attended by many schoolchildren, and during the summertime, our renowned summer reading program provides a much-needed academic bridge to the next school year. Our libraries include, in their collections, the books that have been specifically correlated to the school district's objectives. And so, for these reasons, I therefore see the benefit of having a member on our commission who is both a community member and an advocate for the benefit of our city's schoolchildren. And let me close by saying that having a San Diego public charter school housed in our central library will be a model for the nation, and I encourage the school board to take this innovative step forward.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve the lease agreement with the city. Any comments, Mr. DeBeck?
Yeah, I have one on the, I have one specific one on the actual exhibit. I'm going to read it. In the exhibit, it says, "CCDC funds will later be used to reimburse $20 million back to Proposition S for use on other downtown projects." Where did that statement come from? It's not in any contract I've read, it's not in any document that I've seen relevant to this, and it's misleading as it can be. And I don't know how-
Well, it says right there on March 30th, we approved it, which we did.
It says, "will later be used to reimburse."
And it says on March 30th.
It could say "may," don't interrupt me. It could say "may," but it doesn't say that, it says "will." And I understand the word "will" is pretty, a much-done deal, and it's right here in the exhibit, under fiscal impact. It says a recommendation, three lines, fiscal impact, about four lines from the bottom is where it ends, but it's actually in the fifth line. So, it's there. It's straight, patently wrong. I have never seen a document that says this fact, and I don't think it's a fact. So, you know, I know that, in fact, I'm even reading this CCDC may tap out soon anyway. So, when are we going to get the 20 million? We're not even giving it up yet. We're giving it up in increments, so then we're going to get it back before we ever give it? That's a good deal, I'll take it.
If I can clarify, Jim Watts, Director of Planning, I apologize for my voice, I've got kind of a bad cold. But in March 30th, when we came before you for the use of CCDC funds to offset part of the lease payment, what the Board approved was that there would be an initial payment of $7 million from CCDC funds that the district currently has to offset the part of the lease payment. And then the additional, in the future, $13 million of potential Prop S projects would be reimbursed or would be paid out of CCDC funds. So, at the end of the, at the, at the end of the day-
Okay, I hear you, I hear you.
The $20 million lease, in essence, comes out of CCDC.
Well, let me ask you a point. Okay. As I understand it, Proposition S is across the board for the district as a whole, and CCDC is only concerned about redevelopment in the central city.
Correct.
Therefore, the money that they gave us could not legally be given to us for other Prop S projects at all, because they could only give us money that would go to downtown projects. Is that correct?
That's correct. And so, we would specifically be targeting projects in Roosevelt and San Diego High with the, with the use of CCDC funds in the future.
Okay, and the original proposition, which this Board wasn't a party to, was that we were going to use that $20 million for planning for the build-out and the elementary school needs of East Village. So, then you're saying now that if that money came, if we spend our $20 million now, sometime in the future, we'd get back $20 million to spend on our own needs in downtown? But as I remember, East Village is outside of CCDC.
No, no, that's still within the, that's still within the boundaries.
All the way-
But to clarify, what's, what's in the actual bond language is the, it talks about expanding educational opportunities in the downtown area.
I understand that, I was here when it was planned. I know how the words were changed to fit this project. I understand all that. What I don't understand is this, this specific line that says, "We get 20 million bucks back out of CCDC."
Well, and again, to clarify, and I think it is a little misleading the way it's written. As the Board approved in March 30th, $7 million of current CCDC money will go towards the lease payments. So, the first $7 million of lease payments will come directly from CCDC funds.
That we could have used for Washington School or San Diego High or any other, other purpose, but basically, those were monies that we're just diverting to that purpose. I understand it.
Correct. And then, then $13 million-
You can't say that you believe it's true that CCDC will give us $20 million back.
No, CCDC is not going to give us $20 million back.
What's this say?
From the funds that we get, the district annually gets a payment from CCDC, from the redevelopment area. Those, out of those funds, we will in the future, when this is several years down the road, we will, $13 million of those CCDC funds, as they become available, will be used to offset Prop S expenditures, primarily in San Diego High and Roosevelt, which are within the CCDC boundary.
Not Sherman. Because Sherman's not in the boundary of that.
What?
Never mind, never. I just-
Ms. Nakamura.
Yeah, I, you know, nobody's going to spoil this for me. I think this is a wonderful night. This is a great project, and it is one that so many citizens have worked on for such a long time. The idea of having a charter school within this library is, I think it's groundbreaking. It's going to really forge a new partnership and a new relationship between the library system and the school system, which, why there hasn't existed this sort of a formal link before, beats me. But in the words of Todd Gloria, when we came down and spoke in front of the city, "Council, this is the way government should work." This is a unique, unique opportunity for our students, and I am so grateful to the citizens who have toiled in these vineyards, hoping to get this library built for such a long time. You know, it struck me that we have, for my vote, we have two Russians, actually, to think. One is Sikorsky, the inventor of the helicopter, and the other is Dostoevsky, the Russian literature, Russian author. In the third grade, my son needed a book on the inventor of the helicopter, Sikorsky, and I went to the San Carlos Library, and I went to everywhere trying to find it. I went to Barnes and Noble, and I could not find a book on Sikorsky. There ought to be a book. There should be a library large enough and full enough that there is a book, a collection available for our students. In high school, he wrote a paper on Dostoevsky, went to the San Diego State Library, books way over his head that he carried home, that were not age-appropriate. You know, the ones that we had in our library were too easy, and the ones in the high school were, or the university, were too difficult. You know, we need one that is, a collection that is just right. I think it's a, really, an honor and a privilege to be able to do this for our students, and it will last an awful long time into the future. Regarding the library commissioner, I do want to make it clear that my intent is that this actually be an employee of the district who has knowledge of the system, knowledge of the school district, not to be a second librarian, because there's already a head librarian, but rather one that will be a voice in the room that can help with informed decisions regarding how this partnership might work better. And if, you know, I think that having the superintendent make the selection, but it should be somebody that can truly knows, understands this very magnificently complex school district that we've got, with all its different nooks and crannies and different kinds of students, and how that can work together with the library. But no one is going to ruin this for me tonight. I am, I am very pleased and very honored to be part of a long parade of impassioned citizens that have had this vision for this city, and as to what this actually can accomplish for our, for our very youngest citizens who so often don't have a voice in our government. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Okay. Well, to start off, I cannot support this motion. I think there are a lot of great things about this project, particularly in the whole arena of joint use. I think there needs to be a lot more in terms of joint use between cities and schools. As an example, one area I would like to see, joint use would be really on the issue of libraries, as far as neighborhood libraries, school libraries, and school facilities. You know, we have such reduced neighborhood, city library hours, and we need to kind of find ways to overlap them or relocate, combine with schools and so forth, so we can have better learning communities out in the neighborhoods. I think the situation with this, the real issue is not that this isn't a great project, just like it's also great to pay for AP exams, and it's great to not lay off any employees and a lot of other things, but it's really an issue of priorities. And we're already dealing with a lot of difficulties in terms of Proposition S, as far as the slower rollout due to the, to the bond market and so forth. But there are a lot of very important projects that are being held back because we have moved the library to the front. And I realize this is because of the timing, and the city came up with this opportunity, and this is the chance to come in, but to me, it's a little bit backwards to say, this is when the city is ready, and this is what the city wants to do, so therefore, let's jump on and, and create this right now. I think in terms of fiscal impact, one of the things that's, usually when we're approving a charter item, a new charter school or a charter renewal, we see a fiscal impact, which is $2 million, $3 million, or something of lost revenue to the district due to that number of students not being in the regular district. And I do think that charter schools are also a great thing. However, there's also a fiscal impact here in terms of several hundred students, less, several hundred fewer within the district, is going to be lower funds for the district. So, for those are the reasons. As I said, if it turns, I will certainly, whatever the Board decides, will, will eventually support and work for and probably go and enjoy it. But this is the reason I'm not voting for this motion.
Ms. Jackson.
Well, this has been a long time coming. I think that initially, when I was at one of the library, for the library event, and I mentioned by having a school in the library, they thought I was kind of cuckoo way back then. And I was saying that the city downtown area is projected to have 90,000 residents, and what are we going to do for a school? And I remember asking the superintendent, who's downtown looking out for our interests as they're building these buildings, and we're going to have children down there? And it was quiet for a while. So, I was glad when this opportunity came back up again. And certainly, this is a unique thing to do, but it is the way that we should be working together. At the initial time of the proposal, we were not in the economic crisis that we're in now. It made sense then, it makes even more sense now, and I can only hope that as we continue to move forward, not just the city, but other entities we can work to partner with to bring about really good, strong development for our students, which are our citizens of the future for this particular city. So, I'm very happy to support this measurement, given the fact that they thought I was kind of out there when it first surfaced. Thank you.
Well, I certainly support the, support this lease moving forward, and I support the project. I was inspired to hear Ms. Andrews, especially the Kimbrough parent, talk about the opportunities that it's going to set up for, for her kids and other kids who live in the downtown area. We've been discussing in particular our relationship with Memorial Middle School, to see a feeder pattern from Memorial into this school, as well as to have opportunities for students like Matthew to come from different parts of town to attend the school. So, I think it's, I think it's an exciting project, I think it's something that we're all going to be proud of, you know, as, into the future. I do understand the concerns of folks in the present, and, you know, if, if we could move forward on this project in a way that didn't push other projects back on the list, I would certainly want to do that. We can't. And so, you know, if we don't take this opportunity now to move this project forward, we're going to lose this opportunity, and it will be gone. I want to thank Ms. Jackson for her vision of seeing how school could be incorporated into this, into the downtown library. And I want to thank Ms. Nakamura for strengthening this proposal from the district's standpoint in two significant ways. One is, it was actually Ms. Nakamura's idea in the first place to look at using CCDC funds to come in and offset some of the Prop S funds, so we could mitigate the amount of money that Prop S was requiring upfront from this project. And then, it was also Ms. Nakamura's idea to incorporate it into the agreement with the city, that the school district has a position on the, on the library commission. I think both of those aspects have made this project, which is exciting to begin with, even stronger from the district's perspective. So, why don't we go ahead and vote on, on this lease? Okay, great. Passes three to two. Thank you, library supporters, for coming out tonight. And now, we've got H02, our operational expectations report on asset protection. We've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Nope, let's vote. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Saff has polled items I-03, I-16, I-25, and I-27.
And I want to pull I-26.
And Ms. Jackson is pulling I-26? I'm sorry, Saff has withdrawn those I-03, 16, 25, and 27.
Okay.
We've got a couple of speakers here. Okay. So, why don't we call up speakers for item I-12? Mike Goldwater.
Oh, wait a minute. And I wanted to pull I-04.
Okay. So, we're polling I-04 and, sorry, Ms. Jackson.
I-26.
I-26.
Mike Goldwater, Ms. Ward knows that I have two separate issues, and I beg your indulgence on these issues. I have two separate documents to give forward.
Go ahead.
Okay. On F.02, there was a concern on layoffs, reductions, positions that are vacant versus positions that are being held, and we're looking at funding. Unfortunately, my concern is dealing with I.12, not F.02. But they are interrelated. If you're looking at the ability to save $19,687, it's very real. We can do it. We can do it most efficiently. If you notice, and I'm not going to use names, but I wanted to give you the names involved here. If you notice, we're looking at the position called caretakers. It's an hourly position, and we're looking at an individual- It's an hourly position, and we're looking at an individual that has been retired from the San Diego Unified School District midnight the thirtieth of June 2009. And if you look at him, he has been rehired the nineteenth of April 2010 as an hourly position. His hourly salary would be $12.62 an hour on an eight-hour shift. He would earn $100.96 on the standard monthly 173.33 hours of actual work. He would earn $21.87 a month. And on the fiscal year, on a 195-day scale of an hourly individual, the fiscal from July first to June thirtieth, his income would be $19,687.20. And looking at Mr. Breezy, I believe this would be a violation of the stipulation with a contractor for the golden handshake that took effect one July of 2009. And for the benefit of the public who are watching on TV right now, I'd like to read my small paragraph. All employees were informed that they could not be employed by the San Diego Unified School District in any capacity for a specified time. This individual, for 10 months, has been retired. This individual has been retired from the school district for less than 10 months. The person that hired him, that hired this individual is a current zone manager working for the San Diego Unified School District. This current zone manager is a personal friend of the person that got hired. This zone manager is also an acting COPS for the benefit of the public. That's a custodial operations supervisor. Now, the question at hand is, why are we, the public, the homeowners in the city of San Diego, allowing this violation of the stipulation of July first of 2009 to happen and to continue? The cost is alarming. How is the San Diego Unified supposed to save money by retiring individuals, paying the premiums to supplement their retirement, then rehiring them to do hourly work? My term I use is called cronyism. We have to stop this abuse of public funds. And I believe the Board of Education has the power to do that. Now, this, if you look at the-
Mike, we got to, we got to wrap it up.
Okay. Well, that's on this subject. Okay?
Okay, so-
The second subject I have, and I'm going to give Ms.-
What, what item is this?
This-
What item are you speaking to now?
Again, I point one-two. It covers-
We can't, Mike, you already used up your time, so you've spoken to item I point one-two. Thanks. Yep. We're going to, we're going to move on now. We've got Joan Collins, who wants to speak-
Can I bring, can I at least give Ms. Ward the documentation?
Please.
So you can review it?
Please.
As individuals?
Yes, yes. You want to speak to item I eighteen?
Hi, good evening. I'm happy this late night to, to come here with a positive note. I just want to support this, and with my colleagues in the print shop, that you're going to bring back some work in the house for the bargaining unit members. I love it, much like when I was here in December, when we brought the paper back in for the warehouse. This just makes good business sense, and I want to thank you for your consideration for this item. It's just, I like the way we're going. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Joan. And Leticia, I don't know if Leticia's still here. No? Okay, great. So we've got Ms. Jackson pulling item I twenty-six, and Mr. DeBeck pulling item I zero four. Any other items that board members wish to pull?
I'll approve the rest.
Second. Okay. We've got a motion, a second to approve the rest. Please vote. Okay. Why don't we start with item I O four? Mr. DeBeck?
Okay. This, this is interesting, interesting because, I guess because of my experience in the district, and it caused, caused me concern. The individual, the curriculum committee recommendations for pilots are generally for special, an individual school to do something different. When I looked at these, I looked and I saw a bunch of them all, each individual courses kind of, people wanted to modify them, and there's some that are like duplicates, but you could say, well, they want to try it in the middle school, and it's not a high school credit, so, you know, name the title. But when I got to the I High piece, I got pretty concerned. And the reason I did was because it looks as though that this is a, a recommendation that I High offered the course, and that other schools don't. And I'm not quite sure why that would be, because, and in fact, when I wrote my question about it, I was told, oh, well, no, they're, they're going to jointly enroll in their high school and I High and, and get the course. I can't imagine why that would be. If the course is available online, and it's, I'll call it self-directed, and there's some, you know, maybe there's a question of access, I don't think that you need to go through downtown to get a credit in a local high school. We did that with the credit recovery. We have, so basically, only thing I would say about this particular piece is I think that all the courses that are listed under the I High should be available to any school that has access to the internet and has the ability to grant credits, and that would mean all the high schools in the district. And, you know, it, it, to me, it seems appropriate that that be done. I don't, I'm not objecting to I High offering the courses in any way, shape, or form. What I'm really concerned about is the issue that it has to go through them. I don't think that's necessary. I think it's basically a, a course that could be taken online. You meet the requirements, there's feedback given, you know, and maybe there's a little hands-on kind of help for the kid to get started, but I don't see it as being an exclusive offering of I High. That's my point. So I want to just make a motion that we approve the curriculum committee recommendations, and that all the online courses that are attributed to I High be available to other schools, other high schools.
Okay, can we get a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Superintendent, is there any, or Mary or Darrell, do you want to speak to-
I think Darrell wanted to explain a little further, the I High connection and all the high school applicability here.
Just for clarification, the reason that these were listed under I High is that we currently, as Mr. DeBeck pointed out, provide an opportunity for other high schools to utilize these online courses. The reason they go through I High in this list is because the UC has now new requirements that are being placed on the approval of online courses. One of those requirements is that the individual schools have a partnership agreement with the University of California. I High is going through that, has that with Apex right now on file, and is going through that process with the other providers that we're looking at here. The other reason that's important to note here is we're bringing several courses to you, because we don't know exactly what the UC will do December 31st, 2010. They have talked about simply extending the principal certification policy, which means we would do something possibly completely different, like continue to use the existing Apex courses, or to use a blend of what works best for the school district. Again, going back to the enrollment process and why students are dual-enrolling into I High, I High provides a significant amount of support to the high schools, including ensuring that teachers know how to deliver an online course, that the counselors and other mentors understand how to watch the success of a student when they're taking that course. The first week to two weeks are very critical. If a student's not logging in, we need to quickly jump in and assist and get them back into regular classes, and we need, or we need to help them make sure that they can be successful. Our high schools aren't all ready to take on this work on their own just yet, and so this was our, part of our three-year migration plan to help get online learning options for kids in our school district.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not going to engage in a long debate, but we have credit recovery at schools that's online. We have the ability to, 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 to learn, and I believe that the schools are able to use it. We shouldn't be depriving kids. They, they shouldn't be saying, oh, well, if you're not hooked up with I High, you don't get the credit. If a kid does the work online and gets the, the work, then, and I don't see, I don't see it being an agreement between UC and I High. I see it being an agreement with UC and the San Diego Unified School District schools. I mean, I don't want to play this, I'll call it partitioning out how we deliver education to kids.
Would it be fair, Mr. DeBeck, to say that implied in your motion is the idea that a school that has the capacity-
Of course.
Yeah, to provide the online course.
I mean, you know, I mean, they may even ask for help.
Okay.
And they even call the help desk. I don't care. The point is that if a kid does the work, they ought to get the credit.
Okay. You want to speak to this? Yes, yeah.
Yes. Hello, I'm Patty McIntown. I'm the principal of I High Virtual Academy. I just, I was concerned, and Mr. DeBeck, please tell me if I'm misunderstanding your concerns, but I was concerned because I'm hearing you say that these courses are intended to be available just to I High and not to the other high schools, when the reality is that our dual enrollment program currently makes those courses available.
Well, okay, but see, this is the problem with using the ICC, because the ICC has always been used for district, and it usually says in the, in the, in the list, it's a district course we're asking for approval of. And then it says it's a pilot's course for an individual school. This doesn't say it's a district's course, it says it's an I High course. Now, if you want to say I High and the rest of the district, that's fine. That's exactly my point.
Okay. I think the confusion is because, and even the current courses that are offered dual enrollment say I High has the course, that's because most of them have I High instructors. In other words, the schools are taking advantage of the fact that, you know, they have a full master schedule, but they have students who need to take certain things. And they can enroll their students with us, but they use our instructors. They don't necessarily have an instructor to put together a whole class of kids, or even enough students.
I suspect there are instructors that are out of the schools that would be willing to take on online learners. Okay? And I believe that if we're talking about a change to, I'll call it a different delivery system for education, that we might want to foster that in all our high schools, rather than limit it to only connecting through the I High institution, which is downtown and not readily accessible to all these kids. So if a kid in Mission Bay wants to pick up the computer, go to their library, have a sponsoring teacher that'll look over their shoulder, and go ahead and work on an online course and get it certified for Mission Bay, I have no problem with that, because the standards are being met online. The standards are, are not being met by the teacher at I High. The course is an online course, and it has its own online standards, which you need. And sure, you may need help, but the, if the person gets through it, whatever way, even struggling on their own, frankly, I'm ready to give them a credit, because you can't cheat online.
I think that, I think that your, your clarification, if a school has capacity, that addresses it.
Let's do it.
And then that'll, that'll just-
Okay.
Okay, that's great.
Who judges that, by the way?
Yeah, go ahead and answer.
I feel like there's like, a lot of different aspects that have to be considered before you guys pass this. Like the teachers that it would affect, and the additional funding that it's not talking about right now that may come, and the numbers of computers like per school, and how many students that it can offer access to and it can't. Like when they can take the classes during the day, and if it would affect their other schedule, and what happens if the UC schools decide that they're not going to take these courses, or another thing, what if they take the classes and they get all of the credits that they need within a year to graduate from high school?
And I'd graduate them.
There's a ton of different things. I don't think we can pass it.
See, I don't, see, I'm just, I just personally believe that if you accept an online course as being equal to another course, that you, and that you have kids that are motivated enough to accelerate their learning by going online, that if they meet the high school graduation requirements in two years, or a year and a half, or whatever it takes, I'm not, I don't want to hold them back, because frankly, they're the kids I want to see, you know, taking care of my health in the future, or being the doctors that I go to, because they're sharp enough to do it. But to say that you, the only way you graduate from high school is to go to four years to a residential school, or go to I High if you want to get out in a hurry, doesn't make sense to me. And I, because I worked in alternative ed most of my last 10 years of my career, I had kids that were making more credits per semester than they would in a regular high school. And I encouraged them to do it, because doggone it, they're catching up. Well, why shouldn't they accelerate too? I mean, frankly, if you get out of school a year early-
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against that idea, but I feel like it's starting a whole nother thing. You're not just taking on the passing of it.
You're exactly right. It's a whole new way of delivering education. It's exactly what girls and boys-
And is it a priority, is the question, right now?
Superintendent?
I, I think we're in violent agreement here for the most part. And I would strongly suggest that in this particular instance, and in any further ICC proposals that come to the board, in regards to online education, we talk about an I High and all school application across the district, conditional to capacity and support. I think, and, and just to plug in, we are in a collaboration with the county now on an online education legislation, and pushing hard forward, so this is very consistent with that.
So we've got a, a motion and a second that we approve all of item I O four, understanding that, that the online courses available under I High should be available at all schools, provided they have the capacity to handle them.
Amen.
Okay? Please vote. Okay, great. And item I twenty-six, thanks.
Couple of questions, one question, one concern. This is an additional 2.5 million, and it's for clarifying, it says additional 2.5 million. So that means it wasn't budgeted, it's additional?
What was this?
This is technology-
It says budgeted.
It says additional. Approval of additional 2.5 million.
It's budgeted in the department budgets. The additional is to the North County Consortium bid for the amount that we can spend on that bid.
All right. So that was my first question. The next question is about the North County Educational Purchasing Consortium, and I went and looked them up several months ago, and I do have some concerns, because the reason it was brought to my attention was, I was asking us to do a lot of RFPs, to make sure that we're diversifying and not just using the same vendors. And, and so it was sent to me, because they said, well, one way of getting around that is by piggybacking on the North County and LA, because in the print they give to board members at the bottom, and this is what I see at the bottom, it says that the district may only purchase the items specified in the agreement. So what happens is, we have no idea who we're getting these items from, and it is actually a way to circumvent the RFP process. So, so I, you know, I, I can't approve, somebody else can approve it, but I have a concern, because I do believe that we should put the items that we need out to bid in the consortium. It's a lot of small school districts, and when I went and looked at it, it was, you know, Delmar, Fallbrook, Fallbrook, those kinds of small school districts trying to come together. And, and, and again, my concern is that they may have certain people, and they do have a list that they routinely work with, which might not have the same views as this district. And, and I think we should put RFPs on the street so that people can bid, not just put it off into a corner where one group has a certain group of people that they're working with, because we don't do that process. So that's just my comment.
Mr. DeBeck?
Yeah, well, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm, expect somebody will tell me over there, and I see an expert standing there. All of these special agreements are like buying on a federal contract. There's like a contract that the federal government or some group gets together and gets the very best bid they can get. Okay? And so we then become eligible to buy through the, by law, to buy through those pre-bid contracts. Now, if the products that are on that contract are not acceptable, we don't have to buy them. So then we, but, but it is considered to be an efficiency for us to, I'll call it, ride on the back of a previously done bidding process that was open and fair. Now, if you worry about local vendors, there were local vendors, I bet, who, who bid on the North County Consortium.
Not very many. You can go look on the website.
Well, but I don't have that data, but I'm, I'm assuming that they had the option, and if they didn't want to, that's their choice. But if we, if we, if, it would be really interesting to experiment with your point, and go ahead and make out a bid and see if it gets any better results. I don't believe it will. So, you know, the point would be then, how do we delay while we go through this process?
I'm, I'm not saying delay. I'm just saying whether they're going through-
Well, it is a delay. Well, it isn't delay.
No, I'm just saying whether they're going through the consortium, they put an RFP on the street and, and go through the RFP process. What I think would be helpful, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, but for me, I have no idea how these things turn out. I mean, when I went to the consortium website several months ago, I was not happy with what I saw. Now, but I'm not a purchasing agency. Purchasing, I mean, that's, that's your world, and maybe that's the right thing, but the reason it was pointed out to me was because the request for RFPs that I, you know, we were requesting to be inclusive, and that was a way to get around doing the RFPs. And I'm just sharing that.
I move approval.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Mr. Hamby, did you want to speak to this at all?
Anything I could add to it? The consortium does consist of the North County, a group of North County schools that were established years ago in cooperation with the County Office of Education. There are other members such as this school district who are associate members of that, so the buying pool and the representation of that group is, is substantial with the number of districts that are, are involved within total San Diego County area.
Okay. Any further board comment? Please vote. Okay. And then, do we have one last public speaker? Yep. It's Mike Goldwater. Thank you. Yep, Michael.
Thank you for hearing me. You have the documentation in front of you, and what I'm concerned with is Physical Plan Operations has the authority over the safety compliance technician position. And if you look toward the very back, the fifth page from the back, I believe it is, you will notice a letterhead document from the San Diego Unified School District, Human Resources Division, and you'll notice I yellowed out, I highlighted an area there. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory that if an individual by the San Diego Unified School District, Human Resources, is qualified as number one for the position and gets an interview that the district hires outside the district and spends an additional twelve thousand dollars for benefits, that's not a very physically safe and assured decision-making. Also, I'd like to read something to you. If you look at the very last page, there's a highlighted section under the word "this." That's where I'd like to start from. The entire document of twenty-two pages is self-evident. I'm not going to go through it right now. I'm hoping and I'm trusting each one of you will. Mr. Dubeck, you told me a year ago, year and a half ago, that I should be able to move up in the district. I, with my education and my abilities, I would make a good supervisor. Well, this documentation shows, yes, you are correct. And the problem is, why is it not happening? I'll start under the word "this." "This organization that we toil for on a daily basis emits a mantra to all students that we are responsible for. Study hard, stay in school, get good grades, you may attend college or earn a college degree. This will enable you to obtain a good job and excel in life. It is a travesty of justice that the San Diego Unified School District does not believe what it preaches to these children. I too was young, I too was once a young person who did study hard and wanted to continue, but unfortunately, a war got in the way, Vietnam, and it took several years to get back on track to the concept of studying hard, go to college and get degrees, and then you will get a good job. I have sacrificed more than just a few years. I have spent a lifetime to obtain an education, and I'm in the final stages of that quest, as I have stated at previous times talking to you. My only concern is to be given a fair chance. I don't want any special advantages. I just want a fair chance. This has not occurred in nearly sixteen years. The question I place before you is this: When will I be given a fair chance?" And underneath there are my name and my credits to my name. Now, my question I have is this. If there are, as we talk this week, if there are interviews for that position that I've applied for, and I understand after speaking to the job analyst, that the job analyst even sent an email to the individual who's doing the interviewing, how come they chose another person when this person standing before you, by the district's own documentation, is qualified by number one? What's going on? Is it because I was a union officer for twelve years, there's retaliation against me? Because within the Physical Plan Operations, I represented over nine hundred representations in twelve years? Is that possible?
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Goldwater.
Hey, you know what? I could relate to your, your, your point. Having left the district a couple of times on my own because I was frustrated with my advancement, and the answer's simple, and I learned it, I hoped you would learn it too, is that the people that hire get to, get to choose. And they may choose from a number of number ones, but I remember one personnel person telling me, John, you're never going to make it in this district because you speak your mind. So maybe we have a legacy, you and I. But nevertheless, I managed to succeed some way, and I'm assuming you will too.
Oh, by the way, I, I, five more seconds. I forgot to tell you, this, this folder contains about eight or nine different jobs of the same type of situation that you have in front of you.
I got a stack of no-latters that say-
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goldwater. Okay, well, recess and debrief upstairs. Thank you.